We are now into public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come forward and to make comment. If you'd please come to the podium and if you would state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Michael Lynn. My questions are for Agenda Items B, for the City Attorney. And I would like for these questions to be asked. As a constituent to City Council and speaking on behalf of many in the community revolving around all the lawsuits that we've had in the city. So here are a couple of questions I'd like for the Council to ask of the City Attorney who have them sitting there. How are outside attorneys funded? I've been at Council for the last four years, hearing of outside attorneys be brought in, conversations surrounding paying them. I know from my own case that my attorney fees racked up to somewhere close to $500,000. And that's just for one attorney, you know, one attorney on this case. I've been in court with four or five city attorneys, I should say two city attorneys and multiple others from outside, and I'm just figuring, trying to figure out how that's paid for, and I think the community probably would want to know that as well. If the answer is, and I presume the answer is going to be, that it's pulled from other departments in areas where there may be extras, and if that's true, where is it? Where's the data on how much is pulled and where the funds were pulled from? Where does money to pay settlements come from and total amount paid this year so far? And if that's pulled from other departments, where is it being pulled from? I would hate to think that some of our departments who are so light in people working and resources have other funds being pulled from them to pay for results of our HR department and the City Attorney's Office losing civil litigation. So this is important because it goes to the root issue of our HR department letting grievances get to a point of litigation and stubborn effort to be correct or win an issue instead of the best interest of the public and the parties involved in resolving them. I am obviously a firsthand witness of that, and I tried to resolve my situation, I don't know, 10 or 15 times before I actually had to file a lawsuit. We've known that we've had multiple reports done that our HR department has really been culpable in a lot of these lawsuits and their handling of these things, of these complaints that ended up turning out to be that way. And I don't think this is the City Attorney's fault. I think a lot of this gets thrown on the City Attorney to defend the city's interests. But there's a problem here that's obviously arising that's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more. How are judgments paid? If insurance, and I'm asking because I'm pretty sure insurance is going to be the conversation, if insurance and our deductible is a million dollars, does being sued and losing make it harder for us to be insurable? Obviously, that would be important to us taxpayers. If we, if you have too many accidents, your car deductible goes to a astronomical amount. Sometimes people have to get rid of their vehicle. So I would want to know where that money's coming from, and again, if they're pulling it from someplace, and what does that look like for us going forward? Why no mention of the million dollar verdict entered against the city in the attorney's summary? I'm looking at the City Attorney's summary here, and it's okay to talk about our wins and losses, I'd imagine, but I don't see that one on here, and that's a big liability of a million dollars. So that's just some of it. I appreciate if you all ask some of those questions today.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Nicholas Zandi. I'm from the, and I'm from the Second Ward in the Old Everett Neighborhood. And I am here to speak on Item B, Department Budget Presentations, specifically on police. So you all know my opinions on police spending and how I think there should at least be some limitations on it because of how, in my opinion, is way overfunded. There are many other things you could be spending your money on, such as neighborhoods and infrastructure, but you're spending more money on public safety than they really need. You know the phrase balancing the budget? That phrase certainly should apply here because our budget is significantly imbalanced, and if we want to balance it, we need to limit spending on overfunded departments and increase spending for underfunded departments like neighborhoods. That's all I want to say, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Hello, Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident. Real quick, I'd like to add on to Mike's comments and the questions that he's asking that I think are very good questions. They all really lead to the main question of what monies are we gambling with when we continue to take things to court, when we continue to not try to settle them, when we continue to try to take them all the way? Exactly what monies are we gambling with? And is there any thought process as to risk versus reward? Is there any strategy behind that? And I think knowing where those might be pulled from, what's going to be affected, I think that's an important question. But what I really wanted to talk about is I've come quite a few times to hear some of the, you know, the questions that are being asked, and they're pretty consistent, and they're really good questions. They've prompted a lot of great conversation to a lot of the department heads, and I think it's really, really important. It's extremely important for the Council and the people to understand the department budgets, kind of in its entirety. But I think it's just as important and probably more so to understand what the implications for the city are for each department budget. So I didn't know this was happening today. I would have liked to put this on record beforehand. I will still send this all in an email, but I took from some experience that I have over the years, asking budget-related questions, but then also being on the receiving end of them. So I wanted to suggest some to you all that as a citizen, I would love for them to be asked of department heads, especially if there's no statute on going back and asking them. So the first one that I think is really important is, to a director, can you explain the rationale for the proposed budget? Meaning, what are the overarching goals based on the previous year and the upcoming year? That should always be an implication when it comes to a budget as its entirety, is what's the rationale? And it should differ from department to department because their needs are going to change. Number two, how does this budget align with the department's strategic goals and objectives? Now, that's going to be dependent on whether or not they have strategic goals and objectives, which any department within any entity absolutely should based on the previous year and upcoming year. Number three would be, can you explain any major risks or any uncertainties associated with the proposed budget, and how will those be managed? A lot of what Mike was talking about. Those are some big risks, some big uncertainties. How do they plan on managing those within the budget? Because it's going to impact them whether we talk about them or not. Number four, how will your department measure the success of the proposed budget and what metrics are going to be used? And last but not least, how will your department ensure transparency and accountability in the proposed versus the actual use of the budget? Because that's when those variables come along, those things that pop up that we didn't talk about all year long, and now that money has to be pulled from somewhere. So now we need to talk about the actual budget and how that was affected.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Council at this time? Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will move on to the first item on our budget, and that is the Police Department. And Chief, if you would please come forward. Okay, Chief. All right. As you know, there were a set of questions that we've asked all of our department heads to answer, and do you have those questions in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So if you'd like to start off with any opening remarks and then start in on answering those questions, after that, we are going to go along with the same practice that we've had. We'll turn it over to the internal auditor to see if she has any questions, and then we'll open it up for Council.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Council, for allowing us to come today and share our budget with you and be able to answer any concerns or questions that you have. For question number one, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to proposed budget? The FY '23 budget was 51-580-854 versus the proposed budget for FY '24 is 54-466-595, which is a 5.6% increase. Number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, what are they? No, there are no new changes or proposed new services. Number three, are there any rate or fee increases? Answer is no, not at this time. Number four, are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? The answer is no. Number five, are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics. The answer is no. Number six, did your department receive ARPA funding for the current fiscal year, and if so, how was it spent? The answer is yes. How it was spent was allocated for our Police Athletic League. There was funding allocated for a record digitization process. There was funding allocated for technology in the form of laptops for training. There was allocated money for public safety barriers, and there was allocated money for a new record management system. Number seven, does your proposed budget include a carryforward of ARPA funds? If not, how does your department programs change because of not having ARPA funds? The answer is in half yes for the PAL, the digitization, and the RMS projects, because these are longer processes that will take longer than the FY year. And for the laptop technology and the public safety barriers, the answer is no, those are purchased and in place in hand.
Okay, thank you. Emily, I'll move over to you.
Hi, Chief, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Just a couple of quick questions. Does the Police Department at this time have any plans for how the opioid settlement funds will be used?
The hope is that the opioid funds will be used to help supplement the social workers that we have for our LCAT once that funding is used.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, we noticed that there's quite a significant decrease to expenditures for the Tri-County Metro Fund. Can you talk a little bit about the city's financial relationships and obligations to the Tri-County Task Force and why that would have gone down so significantly?
Yeah, I'll let Cheryl talk to speak to that.
Hello. I specifically actually addressed the Finance Department because I had some questions that I was unable to determine specific answers for. I did not get definitive answers, and I would like to know what our specific financial obligations are. We do see that the funds that we've requested would cover the expenditures for another annual.
Okay, great. So we'll just follow up with you and Finance.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Those are all my questions, thank you.
We do have the Finance Department here. Can you answer that question at this time? Okay, we're now opening it up to Councilmember's questions. Are there any questions from Councilmembers at this time? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I think I've asked this in previous budget years, but it kind of has to do with drug forfeiture revenues and how...
Brian, can you bring your mic a little bit closer? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It has to do with drug forfeiture revenues and kind of how they're collected, enforced, and all these things. Because I noticed in both for the Tri-County Metro and the federal Drug Enforcement Special Revenue Fund, that from actuals, a previous year is lower number, and then proposed is a higher number. Does that mean you have to collect or do more enforcement to get forfeitures, to acquire and meet the budget, or can you explain that?
No, and I remember your question from last year, and that was something that Mr. McClure was here and answered, and I don't have that answer for you, other than that is a projected number. So to answer your question, do we go out and try and forfeit more money to reach that number? That is, no, that is not true, not accurate.
Okay, well, I'm looking at, I guess, to start with page 72, for example, and I guess, why is there such a difference between FY '22 actuals, FY '23 adopted, and FY '24 proposed? In this case, it actually looks like the proposed is a smaller number significantly.
The proposed number only reflects the expenditures and does not reflect the income because, again, that speaks to, I had some questions that were not able to be clarified prior to. The $241,000 operating budget is what TCM has agreed will cover their expenditures. That's why, that's what we asked for. In previous years, from what I understand, there were, like, for example, I believe, I believe it was the previous fiscal year ending 2022, those revenues only generated $8,300.
And I guess, just to follow up and wrap it up, I guess the concern is, is that there would be incentives to maybe overenforce or to push the boundaries to collect more money or different things to sell. So I just wanted to know, how do you make sure that officers in your force doesn't, for example, if somebody has, for example, maybe gets caught with one controlled substance pill on them, and they also might have, like, their taxes, like, $1,400 of taxes, you could take it and, you know, make that connection, but where does your office make the limit at?
So it's been our stance that that's why that process is in place, and where there's an appeal process for every forfeiture. And that's not something that's dictated by the Police Department, that runs through the prosecutor's office. So that, once that, if that were the case, and that will say that that was not appropriate, that seizure was not appropriate, then those funds would be returned. And that's something that's dedicated to...
And thank you. I guess, just hopefully, my last part about this, also, that appeal process is very burdensome for the person trying to appeal. First, you know, they have to do it within a certain time, if they even figure out, you know, they're wrong, they don't know where to go. So there's still, I think, could be some direction as far as how your agency handles it. Because I understand there is that appeal process, but just the reality is, it's hard for people to appeal that.
Yeah, and the process is set by the county. However, the information is given at point of seizure. So if anything is seized from any individual, they are handed the documentation information immediately before anybody leaves, which all that information is on that document, who, what, when, where, how, to make that appeal. Thank you.
Are there other questions for the Chief? Yes, Councilmember, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, thanks for being here, you guys.
Thank you.
So just expanding a little bit on the drug forfeiture funds, you said they go to support the social workers. Does that cover their whole salary? Is there any money left over on top of that?
You're talking about forfeiture or opioid?
No, opioid. So when the question was asked about opioid, I thought you said drug forfeiture funds. Okay.
Nope, totally different.
Okay. All right. That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you give me an update on the hiring of the CPOs? And then, you know, I'm always going to ask you about the cold cases and how that unit is doing, and whether or not you need more funding for that, or what's it made up of at this point?
Yeah, we'll talk about the CPOs first. Yeah, that is a priority, not only with me, but Mayor Shore. And it all comes down to just being able to staff. So right now, because of our staffing shortages, which we're doing much better at, we are holding up special assignments and promotions. So the special assignment piece of that would be filling those SROs, or I'm saying those CPOs. So that is a priority of ours, and it just comes down to making sure that we have enough officers to patrol and staff the road, and then, once we have that, then we will start filling those special assignments. On the cold case front, we are very aware and cognizant of the budget concerns and restraints, so we have not asked for additional funding for our cold case unit. However, we are aggressively trying to receive funding through grants and of all levels to not only continue but bolster that unit to make sure that we get those families the closure they need.
So just a closing comment, because, you know, the summer's coming, and it's just critically important that you have those CPOs out there and interacting, you know, in the community. I think that just, it prevents a lot of issues if you're proactive.
Yes.
You know, the cold cases, you know, and you know this, but I'm just going to say it again, you know, those families who are looking for closure, that has to be a priority. And if there's something that we need to do and we can help you with, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions at this time? Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you, Chief, for being here. Just wanted to piggyback. Did you give a number of how many of the positions are filled right now for the community police officer?
I believe we have eight filled right now out of 12.
Eight out of 12?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. And then, my other question is, on the road patrols, we've got some serious speeding problems in a lot of our corridors. How short are we there on staff right now?
For, you're talking about overall department or for patrol?
Patrol.
Well, that's kind of hard to say. So, you know, we're at 187 today, sworn officers. So that's about 25 less than funded number, but of those, you know, patrol has always been the priority. So that's why we're holding off on those special assignments and promotions right now, because I don't want to keep taking from the bottom, because we know that speed traffic is one of our number-one issues. So that being said, we don't want to take away our patrol function enough to where we can't put somebody in a neighborhood, we can't put out the trailers, we can't put out the signs and so forth. So that is definitely a priority.
And then, did we receive any federal money this year for just traffic, speed checking?
I'm sorry? No, but we did receive, we operate, extend, I'm going to say extended efforts through the OHSP grant. That is a speeding and monitoring that speaks also to the OUI. But they have, I believe there are six that typically, that it's a strong overtime effort that that grant supports.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. My other question has to do with the vacancies, when you talked about short staff. And since I've been on Council, I've noticed that there has been patrol officer vacancies, more than one. I don't think it's, I remember one time it was six, but we added spots and spots change, and then there's always a group retiring, less people coming in, more competition. I guess my question is, how does those vacancies that's already budgeted for, how does it affect the budget? I know there's overtime, it kind of got to get mixed in a little bit, if you know that. But also, what would prevent anybody from, for example, saying, instead of having 12 open officers, and we know we have 12 more that's going to retire next year, why can't we take one of those spots and turn it into a position that we also need, like a social worker or a cold case, or even change the salaries to increase it, to make our job more competitive? I think I know the answer because it might have to do with unions, and I guess we can't change anything, it might have to do with salaries. But, for example, can we do anything with the money of all those funded positions?
Well, I'll let Cheryl talk to the funded positions versus the overtime, but I can tell you that we take very seriously what we believe we need to staff the city, to run a safe city and have a police department that is adequate for a city our size based on population and crime. And we have since, I mean, since I started here, we were at 256 for sworn officers, and we are funded now for 212. And we are now currently at 187. So in my opinion, we are not to where we need to be to adequately police the city to make it, to meet, you know, our mission and goal. So whether or not we, now, I can tell you that I think this Council knows, in my opinion on allocation of resources for alternate options such as social workers, I think, you know, that since I've been chief, we've allocated more money to build our social worker unit up to one supervisor, two social workers, and now a fourth coming in, or a third coming in. So that is something that I take very seriously, and it is something that we consider every year when we consider our budgetary means and measures. As far as how that, your question about open positions versus overtime, I'll let Cheryl touch on that one.
We went into submitting our original budget to the Finance Department, I believe, with 32 vacancies throughout LPD. With our recent recruit efforts, I believe we had such a strong turn that we are hoping to put 30 of those candidates for officers into academies so that they will be on force. But to reallocate dollars from one position to another doesn't necessarily solve staffing issues. And it doesn't really speak to the overtime, because until we have full staffing in each department, we will have overtime. I don't know if that completely answers your question.
And I can add just a little bit. Overtime is not a good solution to unstaff positions because it causes illness, injury, and burnout, and that's something that we face without even having overtime. That's just something in law enforcement in general that we're facing. That's why there's a staffing shortage right now nationally with law enforcement.
And I'll just be quick. I realize that when you started, there was more officers, way more, and there was more people in Lansing. And I realize that we are under the rate that we should be for a city our size, but I don't think everybody realizes that we haven't been filling those spots as much as we want to. So since we haven't, is there, I just feel like we could do something, but if we can't, we can't. It's just my opinion.
I would not agree with you that we've been filling them like we want to. We've been filling them as we can. I can tell you that had we, you know, we'd be to 212 by now if we had enough applicants and qualified people to come in and want to be law enforcement, police officers these days, and we just don't have that now. We're starting to see that turn. But, you know, there's only so many things that you can remove out of law enforcement duties and reallocate and still maintain that level of safety and trust in the city that we're not there, and we can't, we're not even close right now.
And I wouldn't say reallocate because it's just not really being used, but if there is a need for social workers, and I've heard that, so it would just kind of be like, maybe the same, but adding a social worker, if you just take what's vacant and not, and put it into something that could be filled. It's just my thoughts, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? I have a few questions for you, Chief. First of all, how many do we have slated for retirement this year that have the potential to retire?
Up to 10 more.
10 more? And I know the Fire Department has a $5,000 signing bonus. Do we have any bonuses in the Police Department?
What we've tried to do in HR has been very, very helpful, working with us, trying to get new inventive ways to get applicants to come. We have developed a system that where we can increase, start them off at a higher pay rate from the beginning, like for a lateral hire, for example. And that's what we're trying to do for, to draw officers from other departments, other states to come into Lansing. We can offer them a step increase above what they would, a normal police recruit would start at, instead of that signing bonus that a lot of departments have now.
And then, front-loading. I get that, you know, we're behind, but is front-loading still something that you continue to work on?
Absolutely. That is my goal. Mayor Shore has been supportive of that, so that is something that I would love to be able to get in the position to be able to do.
Part of the impediments in hiring police officers are, everyone is looking for police officers. Are you noticing any trends where we have officers coming in, getting through their basics and that, and then being co-opted or enticed to other departments?
We don't face that type of situation that some of the larger departments do, and I could speak from specific knowledge for the Detroit Police Department. And I could speak from my from specific knowledge for the Detroit Police Department. When we put individuals through an academy, there's nobody sitting outside the academy door handing out a flyer, come work for for us. Now, there is always that draw. But I can tell you that's why our recruitment team and HR have been working so hard to get out there that that our pay and our benefits and everything to draw them in and keep them here is not is not something that you find in other departments. And that's kind of what we're resting our hat on at the end of the day. So I don't see necessarily a trend of the reason that any that that the officers, the few of them had have left for other departments are not because there's anything wrong with the city of Lansing or the Lansing Police Department. And we I know this because we do exit interviews with them. And they tell me, they tell one of the captains or chief back is that this is why I'm leaving. And it could be because my family moved or because I live an hour away and I don't like to drive an hour every day. Or I have family in the city and I'm tired of dealing with my own family in in some cases. And that's that was one of our recent officers. So that is just some that is something. Do I do I see a trend with the Lansing Police Department with people coming in and trying to solicit? No, I don't.
And in looking at exit, well, retirements, when you have officers retiring, what are some of the comments that you're hearing from them as they leave the department?
Well, most people that are retiring are pretty happy because they're retiring. So they honestly don't have a lot of negative stuff to say. We do get some some honesty, though, as far as what we can do better. Some of that rests with me as the chief and some of that rests with how they feel that they've been some. I'll give you an example. I had one officer that left who expressed some concern about community support for the police department. And the problem that that they had was is that they have for a number of years been on night shift, running call to call and dealing with priority calls, I'll say. And they they're not they're not part of our CPOs. They're not seeing the the being a part of some of the events that we're having, the the people that come out and not outwardly support them. They're catching everybody on their worst days on their calls, and that that wears you out. But I but within two minutes, I can give them 10 examples of how the community supports our our police department, our council, our mayor, everybody. And they then, okay, I just I didn't see it like that. It's kind of it's but but I'll tell you, and I'm and I'm being honest, I don't get a lot of negative on the way out. I just don't. And I don't know if that's just uncommon, if that's uncommon for the Lansing Police Department or if that's uncommon for every department. But I'm hoping it's it has to do with being a Lansing cop. But I can tell you that they're they they go out on a high note, very proud and have an established career. And they're just happy to to have served.
Just two last questions. What is the time factor from a officer that is a recruit that's gone through the academy and comes in before they're on their own and then an officer that comes from another department?
So as as a recruit, as a sponsors recruit, you have about a four month academy, three to four month academy. And then you have what we call our field training program, which is officer specific. So some do well, some go right through with no issues. Some have extended retraining situations where they're not doing so good in its day orientation. So they get recycled for a week or two. And then so from a recruit standpoint, you're talking about from day of hire, when they go to to the academy, you're about a year out before they hit the road solo and count. As a lateral, you come in and you really just have to know how to be a police officer in the city of Lansing, County of Ingham. They come from Wayne County or something like that. So it's really just learning how we do things here. That takes about three to four months, depending on how well they do in the FTO program before they count as as a number on the road.
Okay, that answers my question. Is there anyone else that has any other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Our next is Downtown Lansing, Inc.
Good evening, everybody. I'll go ahead and just get started if that's okay.
Yes.
Question one, what is the difference with your budget from the current fiscal year to the proposed budget? The Downtown Lansing, Inc. budget as an organization has traditionally been approved over the last 20 plus years around $600,000 to $700,000. Over the past fiscal year, we have been the beneficiary of various state funding allocations. And because of these one-time transfers, which includes specific appropriations for how funds were have to be spent over the course of multiple fiscal years, the proposed budget is considerably different than what has been presented in the past with the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget of just over $4.4 million. We anticipate within the next two fiscal years that we will be back to a more traditional budget. Question number two, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for and why? Answer this as a yes and a no. Currently, in this current fiscal year and what we have proposed for next year, there are no proposed service changes. But we did have a change based on the state funding allocations mid-year in this current fiscal year that accounted for an expanded programs to help stabilize and sustain our downtown business district, to help prepare for a stronger future for downtown. Question number three, are there any rate increases? No. Question number four, are there any major equipment purchases in your budget? No. Question number five, are there any eliminating or contracting of positions within your budget? No. Question number six, did your department receive any ARPA funding in the current fiscal year? And if so, how was it spent? We did receive an ARPA allocation. And based on various council committee meetings, we're also asked to allocate a portion of the ARPA funding to support Old Town or District B district, which we did do. And the rest of the funding was used for small business support grants. Question number seven, does your program include any carry forward of ARPA funds? And if not, how will your department programs change because of not having these ARPA funds? There may be some carrying forward of ARPA funds as a small business support grants that we are awarding are reimbursement based. So those may carry into the next fiscal year. But in terms of looking at the sustainability of operations through DLI, as I said, we anticipate returning to a more traditional budget over the course of the next couple of fiscal years as our state funding runs out. We are meeting with city administration and the assessors office because over the past three years, we have not made any changes to the PSD assessments. So our board will be meeting later this week based on the meeting that I have the day before our board meeting about any proposed changes to assessments. And we'll commence the analysis and review if we're going to take up any of those recommendations. But with that said, we also intend to continue to aggressively pursue state funding opportunities to ensure the long-term viability of our downtown district as we are only on that first leg of a 10-year transformation journey. Thank you.
Okay, Emily.
Hi, Kathleen. Thanks for being here and thanks for that. Just one question. If you could give kind of a high level overview of what the 4.2 million in this budget for grant money went towards and specifically one-time expenses versus sustainable programs?
Yeah. So from the state funding that was received, there were very specific line items that the state put in that under the economic recovery based on small business or COVID closures, excuse me. So the allocation, it goes to small business support grants as well as community space improvements, building repair or maintenance within the downtown district, supplies, which that can be anything from, you know, computer software that's needed, et cetera, marketing, and then the remainder for capacity building or administrative costs to oversee the programs.
Okay, great. Thank you. No further questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Kelly, I know that we, you know, the board, full disclosure, but I know that you guys did a study of housing needs in the downtown. And I was wondering if you could share that with us as a first one. And then the second one, can you talk about the vacancy percentage for downtown?
Sure. So for the comprehensive market analysis, we are in the final stages of that market analysis based on an executive committee as well as steering committee made up of various stakeholders across the downtown district. We've been working on that over the whole past year. So we will have those final deliverables by the end of this fiscal year and plan to come back before council and any committees, if that's okay, to present the findings and recommendations from that comprehensive market analysis, which does look at not only residential infill and building types, but also commercial opportunities. And then what was the second question again?
The vacancy rates.
For our first floor vacancy rate during COVID and definitely kind of overnight, once all of the remote working went into place, we went up to a 40% first floor vacancy rate. And over the last year, as of this past month, we're at about 20% first floor retail vacancy rate. So being able to cut it in half in a year is a testament to the Business Development Committee that's made up of volunteers and other partners throughout the city. Our first or second story and above vacancy rates continue to be very volatile, quite honestly. I I saw from a certain property owner earlier today that just with their properties alone, they were still at a 30% vacancy rate. We were looking at numbers in 2022, we were at a million square feet of canceled office spaces. And while some of those have been filled and some people are coming back to work, whether it's two to five days a week, there's other leases that we know are coming up and will not be renewed.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. As a lifelong Lansing person, I have a love-hate relationship with our downtown. There are times, I mean, you know, it's empty a lot on the weekend, ride your bike. You can echo around and, you know, see like tumbleweed or just leaves in the fall. And sometimes, you know, there's a lot going on. And I appreciate a lot of the events that Downtown Lansing, Inc. throws. I come with my family. We enjoy it occasionally because it is occasionally. I noticed on page 81 of your of your graphic, if you will, there's a downtown drive time markets. And it's it kind of shows like five minutes away. There are so many people, but it's a household medium in income of 38,000. 10 minutes, the median income goes up by 10,000 or so. And then 20 minutes, it goes up by another 10,000. So it's like the closer you are, it seems like the median income is the lower. The further you are, the higher it is. So is there any efforts that that kind of concentrate on the lower income within the operation?
Yes. And as a lifelong Lansing resident or last round myself, I feel you. And having the job of really prioritizing those who want to be here and be part of our community rather than those who are coming in and out as fast as they can for a variety of reasons. There's a there's a couple of things I just want to say. I know DLI has been traditionally focused or known as an events agency in many ways. And part of our efforts to focus on not only the lower income housing market have been to turn this into more of a 24/7 environment experience for those who call Lansing home. So with the small business support grants, especially through the ones that were funded through CDBG dollars, there is a prioritization in the scoring for anyone who meets the low income, moderate income threshold as well as those that are part of a diverse community. We want our programs, we want our downtown, the business mix, the hours of operation to represent who we are as a community as a whole.
I appreciate that. I just kind of wanted to hear an answer and it's good to know that you guys are focused. I know it's sometimes an uphill battle. I hope that it does become 24/7. So maybe if I want to get something to eat, I'd do it. Besides Midtown Brewing Company, they're open a lot.
They are. They are. And you've got Midtown 517, Lolly's Company, you know, there's a there's a number of businesses that are coming back, which actually to that point, too, as we look at entrepreneurs and startups who can fall into that income, right? We with Middle Village, micro market and different incubator programs, really trying to remove as many barriers to entry as possible and teach and provide a lot of small business support training for those business owners so that they can become even more strong as businesses, build that loyal customer clientele base, and then hopefully move out, not just within downtown, but within the city as well to continue to succeed and grow.
Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you for being here. I just have I have a few questions. Have you put in place a plan of what Downtown Lansing should be shaped like with the reality that state employees are probably never going to return?
So part of our focus and prioritization moving forward is, again, looking at those who want to be here rather than necessarily focusing on that daytime worker and literally building a downtown around that daytime worker like we have been known for for the past 60-plus years. And I'm not just saying Downtown Lansing, but as a city. We got real comfortable with that, that they were our major economic driver. So bringing in different businesses that have different hours of operations. Again, Middle Village is one of those programs that as the businesses hopefully move out within our city, they're already open from Tuesday through Saturday and used to being open 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So into those evening hours as well as weekends. The comprehensive market analysis that we're in the final stages of as well will provide a lot of data to support the different infill opportunities, the different business mix, the different housing mixes that make a lot of sense here and can be successful here. And some of those may be models that we have not seen before in our downtown or within our city.
Okay. And then you've got the grant for 4.2 million from the MEDC. Could you tell me a little bit about why this year we're doing from the general fund 85,000 to your group? When you guys have quite a bit of money this year?
So that has been a standing operating transfer in agreement with the city and the PSD. And so moving forward, that's what we continue to count on so that the state funding that has to go towards those specific programs that I outlined earlier can go specifically to that. The operating transfer has helped because so much of our more traditional funding goes to maintenance of the overall downtown district, snow removal, salting, the planted areas that are within the downtown, City Hall Plaza, things of that nature. So that's where the operating transfer also comes in to help.
Okay. And then I see promotion went up 24,000 from the fiscal year 23. Could you just maybe enlighten me a little bit about what the promotion is?
Sure. When we talk about promotions, we're talking about promoting the different programs we have. So like the small business support grants, making sure that information from everything from our available real estate to our businesses, events, other businesses, activities are all promoted on our website and covering the annual costs of website. Also, marketing when we do have events or other people are throwing events within the downtown district. And with some increases in costs because more of the activities that we're responsible for go into an outdoor space, there's more costs associated with that than if you were holding them inside a building.
And then one other thing, you said something about business hours and working with businesses. Has anybody extended their hours into the later? I mean, so if I go down Washington after five, it's a ghost town. Has that changed at all?
Change is happening in small steps. There's definitely going to continue to be for some time that perception of everything closes at 5:00 PM or it feeling dark and not as active as it can. Part of my and my team's thing that keeps us going on the really hard days is you are seeing more businesses, one to two at a time on each block, extending their hours of operation or choosing different business hours that extend into the evening as well as the weekends. We've seen some of our longer time business owners considering other days or other hours of operation are shifting more into the evening hours as well. So change is slow, but we are seeing definite positive outcomes happening.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I have a couple. You had indicated in question five that you weren't eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions. But when I look at page 78 of the line item, under salaries, it goes from $195,000 to $411,000. Could you explain that?
It showed 195,000 for last fiscal year?
Yes, it did.
Okay. We were closer to 394,000 for our administrative expenses. And so we're not eliminating or contracting any positions. We've added a part-time office manager to our our staff over the past year. And part of that salary is covered through a grant that we received. And then moving forward, as we look at the the And then moving forward, as we look at the long-term needs of our downtown, bringing on a downtown design and planning position.
Emily, can you follow up on, on that? Because these numbers are not driving. Thank you. Are there other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next, we have assessing.
I need to come see you guys about what's in here. My budget is fairly low.
Sharon, can you double-check the microphone, make sure the green light's on?
Oh, okay. Now it's on.
All right. And then to bring it to a little bit.
Just to repeat, my budget's fairly boring. As far as the questions, what is the difference between your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? It's going up less than 1%. Are there any changes in services? No. Are there any rate or fee increases? None. We don't really, we don't have any fees or, or charge for anything. Any major equipment purchases? No. Eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in the budget? No. We did not receive any ARPA funding, so number seven is not applicable. That's about it.
Okay.
It's just people and supplies.
Are there any questions for assessing?
Hi, Sharon.
Yes, councilmembers?
Oh, I was gonna say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Right ahead. I'm sorry, Emily.
No, 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 I was gonna say, I don't have any questions. As you said, your budget's pretty boring, so.
Okay.
It is.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm looking on page 88 of 169, personnel. So the adopted budget in FY 2023, 1.19 million. And then the proposed budget, but I don't understand how it ends up being a 70% change from the adopted budget. Am I reading that right?
Yeah. It's the, it's the adopted to, from the projected is what the change is.
Oh, yeah.
And that was explained in ways and means of, and I think they're explaining that budget later, is that right, President Wood?
Do you understand what I, do you understand what I see?
Yeah.
Is it in the updated documents?
Yes.
Yeah, so they finance in their updated documents, did it from the projected FY '23 budget to the FY '24 budget for the percentage increase, where when the budget was created, it's done based on the FY '23 adopted to the FY '24 proposed? So.
So may I? Sharon, are there any vacancies in your department?
Yes.
That would account.
Yes, we have.
Adopted or proposed?
Adopted and projected, the proposed assumes filled positions.
Okay. All right. So it just, it just, it's a little misleading, I think. It's confusing to me, but I got it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Sharon, a couple of questions. I know one of the things that we continue to try to make sure that we're catching up with, and that's people with homesteads and, and non-homesteads with property assessments. How are you checking on those as those come in?
Well, what if it's a brand-new exemption claim? We only scrutinize it as far as if they claim that they've had another claim somewhere else, we follow up on that. But, you know, we're, and we do quite a few denials every year. We're not the only agency looking at those. The state has a pretty aggressive program of auditing those exemptions as well. In fact, I just got a notice from the state that they're going to be doing quite a few audits of principal residence exemptions this year.
And your experience with BSNA, can you tell me your thoughts on that system?
Well, it's the only system really out there. It's the only game in, in town, really. But I find that it works very well. It also, we have the same system, well, the BSNA for building, so we can sort of seamlessly download building permits into our system for our follow-up to add value to assessments. We also have a pretty seamless relationship with the tax program. So it just makes all of our lives a lot easier when we can team up with those other programs.
And do you have more than one person that is familiar with BSNA?
Well, everybody is to some, to some degree. You know, the admins that are entering PREs and name changes and processing poverties and that kind of thing, they're familiar with that part of it. They may not be familiar with, you know, the commercial pricing or something like that, running reports, but we're all familiar with it to some degree.
And then, could you speak briefly to the nonprofit examinations that you've been doing to, to make sure that they qualify under, under that?
Oh, sure. That, that kind of fell off a little bit during COVID. But, you know, it is our responsibility to, you know, audit the existing exemptions to make sure that they are still occupying the property for the exempt person, or excuse me, for the exempt purpose that they originally were approved for.
All right. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you very much for coming up.
Thanks.
Next, that takes us to Mr. Key. Scott, if you could come down, please, with your team. Sharon, before you leave, could you come to the podium real quick? I got reminded, I forgot my annual question. Tax tribunal.
Yes.
Does this one on? How are we with the tax tribunal?
You know, we have very few appeals right now, and we don't have any large ones. GM appealed, I think it was last year, the year before, and they've kept their promise to stay away for a few years. So we really don't have much at stake at all right now. In fact, I think right now, I've got maybe five unresolved.
That's good.
So, yeah, not very many.
Good. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, Scott.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Been a while. Feel like I would never say, I'm so glad to be back in person with you guys. But I am. You know, much has transpired over the last three-plus years, particularly in the service industry. You know, industry experts are stating now that likely the hospitality industry won't fully rebound till second quarter '25. I do anticipate that that's likely. You'll see some pockets where it's very attractive to go to that have picked up a little quicker already, Florida, Arizona, California. But some of the other locations have not and still have not picked up. We're continuing to work harder, we're trying to get smarter about how we do things. So you'll hear some of that. And I'll just do a quick oversight that answers some of your questions. Grossbeck Golf Course has leveled off from its historic use high of 2021. One benefit from COVID was that people got very interested in golf again. So we've seen that peak, and now it's leveled off at a certain level. You'll notice that our operating contribution requests remain flat from the previous year. We are expecting increases in expenses, particularly labor, utilities, and fuel. But we plan to offset these increases by marginal increases in areas of golf use. So we've gotten creative with Greens of Grain, Greens and Grains, if you haven't come out to it. It's a beer tasting, food tasting event, along with playing nine holes. We've also continued the use of our simulator. And one of the things we're looking at now is that simulators now aren't just for golf. They're now making them that you can play multiple sports at, which we think would be a great idea out at the golf course as well. So we'll continue looking for more tournaments and outings. Jackson Field is returning to its pre-pandemic use, but we still need to work on non-baseball options to attract some more attendees. The operating contribution has also remained relatively flat from the previous year, and we are working with the city and the team to ensure that we are able to meet the new Major League Baseball standards by FY '25. They did push it back one year. Lansing Center did see a jump in return to in-person events during FY '23. We were, last year at this time, putting together a budget and were throwing darts at where we would be as far as what we could accommodate and what people felt comfortable accommodating. So we're meeting expectations and exceeding them. We're also trying to maintain the facility that needs significant improvements. We want to operate efficiently, we want to be attractive to our out-of-towners, but our, our building is coming up on 20 years since any significant improvements. We're also still struggling to recruit and retain staff levels to meet the needs of some events. Many of you attended the Martin Luther King Luncheon and saw that we brought in outside help to help with that. And all of us here, we're also serving meals and picking up and cleaning up. That works for that event, doesn't work for every event. We'll continue to work on new ways to recruit and retain staff, as you heard from my other department head friends. And additionally, Lansing Center needs further upgrades to be more attractive to the variety of events and make it more efficient in its operation. I do believe that the stadium and the Lansing Center can be the catalyst for more downtown activity, but will need immediate attention and support. Our FY budget request for the Lansing Center is down almost 5%, and the LEPA overall ask has decreased 3.3%. To your questions, and I'll just give the answers, overall, 3.3% decrease to LEPA. We have no changes in our services. The question about rate increases, obviously, we operate a little bit different than the city. We do make some changes to some of our fees based on market demand, industry standards, et cetera. I will tell you right now, the hardest is trying to give people a good estimate on their food costs, because it's changing so quickly. We're currently looking for balcony and River Trail area improvements. The Sky Bridge was improved, the River Trail area is now being currently improved, and we did receive a grant to make improvements to the balcony area of the Lansing Center, which we would also include landscaping, lighting, you know, some additional activities that would make that a little more attractive for some small events. We're also repairing some HVAC repairs at Jackson Field. I will just, you know, we're trying to meet Major League Baseball standards, but those things don't include roofs or HVAC, and, and they're 30 years old, and that's really pushing the lifespan of many of these units. So we're having to go out and make repairs very often, and it's not easy to find 30-year-old unit repair pieces. So we're going to need to upgrade some additional things at the stadium soon. We continuously review our staffing needs basis on, based on changes in structure. We're currently reviewing our finance positions and our sales and services positions. We are contracting out some of our finance positions as Kirby, our new finance director, needs to hire some people, so we're utilizing an outside agency currently. We did receive ARPA funds. Those were to help for lost reserves that we used during the pandemic and account for improvements we are working on. We did some domestic waterline replacement. Again, that unit is about 33 years old, so we made some improvements to that. HVAC repairs also at the Lansing Center. And then we're changing it, we just finished changing out a steam line with the help of the BWL, so we're doing some improvements as well. And then, you know, we want to carry forward some money so that we can make further improvements to the facilities, so that we can manage the money appropriately. I forgot to introduce Tristan. Most of you know Tristan's our executive vice president, and Kirby is our new finance director. So I thought it would be great for him to come see what this body does and how the budget presentation interacts.
Emily, I see I remembered this time.
Hi, Scott. Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here. Just a point of clarification, you mentioned that the subsidy went down, but as we talked about, that doesn't include the golf subsidy in that overall number, so I, I don't think it actually went down. Is that correct?
Um, last year, our request was, it, it did go down because the Lansing Center request went down. Golf stayed about the same, 96 and some change. The stadium actually went up, but went up by like $5,000. And then the Lansing Center, we were at 1.369,000, and this year we're at 1,200,000.
But I think that 1.29 number doesn't include the golf number.
No, 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 but I'm, I'm comparing Lansing Center last year to Lansing Center this year.
Where the overall number that you're giving for the subsidy doesn't include the $100,000 for the.
Oh, I don't know where that's put in the, in the city budget. That was the request we made.
Okay. Well, it wasn't included in the overall subsidy number, but that's okay. Moving on, is LEPA doing anything to reduce their dependency on the city subsidy, or are you looking at that at all? Or is there any long-term plan for that, or is it kind of just to go business as usual?
So, the Lugnuts have a lease with the city, and based on that lease, there are different, the different entities have different roles to fill. So, for example, we would have to go and negotiate the lease differently in order to make a change to what the operating contribution would be. For example, utilities right now are 50/50. I'm old enough to remember that when, they only paid 33%. So it's changed to where it's a 50/50 split.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense. I, I don't really, I'm more, you know, about increasing revenues to decrease the subsidy. Is there anything?
To the city. They're always looking for new ways to drive revenues with events, activities, new ideas coming in. So they're certainly, I know that they, at some point, wanted to take over parking because they felt like that could reduce the subsidy. I, I don't know that that's the answer, but they are looking at things, and we do, too. We are always looking for things that could drive some revenue.
Okay. And then just a couple other quick questions. So for the LEPA budget, you have a category that's called "other" that looks like it took a pretty big jump of about 900%. Can you just a little bit explain? It's not a huge, it's from 6,000 to 60,000, but can you just maybe dive a little bit into what is in "other"?
Is it in the Lansing Center budget?
This is in the.
Yes.
Yep, Lansing Center budget, on page 101.
Correct. As we come back, we moved some things around that they were in some other areas. We moved them down 60,000. I don't know, Kirby, if you've got it off the top of your head, but we can probably look up and see what it fully entails.
Okay, yeah.
It likely moved, you know, as you get new people, they decide that it shouldn't be in that category, and it's in this category.
Sure. And then, the other category that jumped quite a bit in the Lansing Center budget is your marketing budget increased about 215%. Can you just give a little bit of explanation there? What are you guys doing for marketing? Why was that budget increase?
We have two projects that, one was supposed to start pre-COVID, was a brand redo. It hasn't been done since the inception of the authority. The other project was that the Lansing Center website needs an update. It's going on 14 years old, and we need to make it more user-friendly for customers to determine what their costs will be. It's, it's just a trend of the industry. I want to know everything about what I'm going to book and do with the website versus calling a person. We still want them to call, because we feel that the booking percentage goes up about 30% if they call versus if they try to do it all online, because they still won't have all the information.
Yeah.
That's what the two projects were for marketing.
Okay, that makes sense. And then, just kind of curious, why is the Jackson Field Fund considered a special, why did you go in the direction of a special revenue fund and not a debt service fund?
That predates me. I'd look at Jim Smirka and see if he knew the answer to that.
It's been a while.
Yeah. I, that would probably be done from initially when it was set up.
Yeah, okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Those are all my questions. Thank you, guys, so much.
Good questions.
Okay. Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. Scott, thank you for being here. I want to start with this, the golf course. We're giving you an operating subsidy from the city for $96,383 because you want to carry forward money to make improvements in '22, '23. And now in the proposed budget, it looks like that amount is still the same, your end net position. So when are you going to make those improvements to use that money?
So we are in the process of doing a master plan right now. One of the things that we need is more cart storage. Think about, I can say this, more people want to ride a cart than walk in golf. And so our cart usage the last two years, particularly between Memorial Day and Labor Day, we run out of carts almost every day. We can get more carts, and that's a cost, but we're going to need to build some sort of secure structure to do that. So we're working on a master plan to look at, that's one element that we recognize the course needs to improve on.
So you were at 96,000 last year for subsidy. We're still at 96,000. We haven't adjusted at all or made any cuts. So, you know, I have to take this budget back to the people of the first ward. And, you know, it's hard for me to explain that we're giving you $96,000 when you have 750,000 in the bank almost and you're not touching it.
That's part of the master plan. So Brett Kusinski and I have, have started meeting and talking about what we want to do to make improvements to that course. There hadn't been any improvements to the course in 20-some years. I will also, if you look a little bit further back, before LEPFA took it over, it had an operating contribution of about half a million dollars. So we are making progress. We're making more progress, but we need to make some improvements to the facility in order to drive up the revenues and eliminate that last part of operating contribution. So if we got more carts, we could rent more carts, and therefore that's more revenue coming in.
But I don't think Carts is going to close the $96,000 gap.
I don't know that that's going to close the full gap, but it certainly is going to be one more element. If we had another space to serve more food and beverage, we currently serve food and beverage in the smallest place that we have, not for anything of size. That would also drive up revenues. There's a few ways we can improve the revenues and the playability of the course.
And then just to understand, so in total, we're about 2 million for subsidies for LEPFA this year. We've been giving you money consistently for years. LEPFA doesn't seem to have to tighten their belt at all for some reason. Do you have any plans to start reducing how much taxpayers are paying for the Lansing Center? For the Lugnuts, for the golf course?
Most facilities receive some sort of regional support, whether it's a tax, hotel tax statewide. For example, Huntington Place in Detroit gets about 48 million from the state each year. We get zero. So they are normally subsidized. It's how you do it. So I have been asking and pushing with our local leaders to try to make changes to how we're supported versus the general fund versus some sort of millage tax, something of that nature.
How long have you been asking for that?
Six, seven years.
And no one has came to you with any kind of idea?
There are some options. They will take time. There is an additional tax that went through right in the middle of COVID. Hotel tax where we can raise 2% that goes specifically towards our type of operation. That's how Battle Creek is building a new facility.
Well, I appreciate your answers. I just, I, I struggle with this because, you know, if I had a management company that had, was running my properties and had me 2 million in the hole, I'd be looking for a new management company or asking, what's going on with the Five Star Breakfast? You know, you guys serve at your, you know, meetings. I'd be looking for cuts wherever I could find them. So, thanks.
Okay, are there other questions? I have a couple of questions for you, Scott. Under, on page 90, under your revenues, at, in 2022, under actual, we had an intergovernmental state $300,000. Do you remember what that 300,000 was for?
We received a grant through the MEDC. We had to spread that across two years.
Okay. And then under building rental, it looks like you believe that you're going to see an increase. Is it because of usage or is it because of the cost that you're charging?
So both. Excuse me. The usage is planned to go up anywhere between 20 and 30%. And the rental figures will be going up as well. What we charge for rent rate effective July 1 will go up as well.
Okay. And then the GrowSpec master plan, how much, with your conversations with Brett, how much do you think that's going to cost to do that? Have you had any discussion with the Drain Commissioner as well since he's been part of GrowSpec as part of this?
So this is so early on. We just had our first meeting. We're looking at, you know, cart barn and irrigation as being the two priorities right now. Six holes currently receive what's called a hydraulic irrigation, which was put in in 1977. That hydraulics is controlled by water. Last year, we had a massive failure because it has to be drained correctly, and it cannot be drained any longer correctly. It's, it's, you know, it's at the end of its life cycle. So we're looking at what are priorities. Number one, irrigation. Number two, cart storage. Then there'll be a few other areas that we'll be looking for. Last year, we made improvements to the maintenance, call it a barn. It's really still glorified pole barn. We made about 50,000 or 60,000 of improvements to that, insulating it. The city also made some improvements by putting in a new boiler, et cetera. So we're working with Brett on those things, but we haven't gotten far enough down the road to meet and fully understand what the cost would be and what the priorities are.
I know you and I have talked, and I've talked with your predecessor about creating an authority that would fall under the auspices of the hotel tax. And part of that is getting Ingham County on board. And so when Councilmember Cost was talking about that, and you said you've been reaching out to people, where are you in conversations with them?
We still have those conversations regularly. The mayor and Julie Pinkston and I have met. We've met with some county commissioners to talk about it as well. It, it just seems to not really move. You know, we're swimming upstream. It was something that was started 37 years ago, I want to say, and...
Not quite that long.
Okay. 30, yeah, it was started a while ago. And it, it's, you're going against, well, this is the way we've always done it. And then the other intricacy is that we have significant hotels that aren't in Ingham County. And so how do you make them participate as well or ask them to because they wouldn't necessarily be required? So there's some nuances there where you try to get everybody on board.
You know, part of that for me is the fact that when we turned the zoo over and created that authority, and then the county ended up paying a tax to, to make sure that the zoo could run and continue to grow and be vibrant, is a prime example of what can be done if we cooperate and work together. So, you know, maybe your next meeting needs to be out at the zoo to remind them that they're part of that.
I, I don't disagree. They're a great model for it.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
And we move on to our next group, which is EDC. Carl. You and I go back almost as long as... I think Patty Cook was here before, before you. Okay. Carl, I don't know which one of you, whether it's Carl or Chris, that's going to take the lead on this.
I will take the lead. I'm Carl Dorsheimer, President, CEO of the Lansing EDC. And with me, I have Chris Klein, who's Vice President of the EDC. And I will just start out and answer the questions as they were provided. So what's the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? There's very little, if any, functional changes between the current fiscal year and fiscal year 2024. The annual contract amount with the city remains at 300,000. The annual funding for the City of Lansing Facade Improvement Program is 175,000, and that's, that's pass-through money. We don't, none of that's used for admin. And then there was ARPA funds that were allocated and accounted for of 2.6 million that is in the current fiscal year, FY '23.
Not 26 million, 2, 2 million?
I'm sorry. 2.6 million.
Okay. I thought I heard you say 26 million.
I thought I...
Okay, I want some of that.
I wish it was 26 million. So 2.0, approximately, it's about 2.6 million. And that was allocated in last, the current budget. So, and, and it will continue through its multi-year program through FY '24 and '25. Question number two is, are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? The answer is yes. Currently, the EDC will continue to provide the base level of Economic Development Services per the annual contract with the city. That's the 300,000. And then also because of the ARPA funds, we've been able to ramp up our services. And then that has been split into four different categories. So we have what's, what's called the LEED Lansing Equitable Economic Development Program. And that's a multi-year program. It's 2.0 million of the 2.6. And then we also have the Facade Improvement Program where there's an additional 175 for targeted facade improvement program projects. And then all, we have four corridor improvement authorities, CIAs. Each one of those received $100,000 of the ARPA funds. And then finally, there's $100,000 that was provided to the EDC for transition costs. And as you know, we've transitioned out of LEAP and are standalone organization once again. Moving on, number three, are there any rate or fee increases? And if so, why? No, the fees for the EDC, that what we charge for services are anticipated to remain the same in fiscal year 2024. And then are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? The answer is yes in that what we're currently, we had to vacate and get out of LEAP approximately a year ago. So we found a great solution, but it's a temporary office space that we, we are leasing for a year. And we knew it wasn't going to be a long-term solution. We are in the process of moving to a long-term location. And so the budget, as you will see, anticipates, you know, one-time use of somewhere around 60,000 to 70,000 funds for office equipment, computers, phones, furniture, et cetera, that we will use to equip our, our new location, new long-term location in downtown Lansing. So you'll see that in there. There's a large percent increase, but if you look at the dollar figure, it's really not that much. It's around 65,000 approximately. So, and that, we will then have a essentially, I don't want to say permanent, but a long-term home and be stable. And then we, there'll be ongoing small costs, but it'll go back to the way it normally is. Are you eliminating, combining, or contracting positions in your budget? No, we're not doing any of that. We're looking to main our current positions. When we made the transition, we were anticipating around six, maybe seven employees. We've been busy with the, the transition and rebuilding the organizations. And we have five employees, and we've had five employees, so there's been some savings there. But we expect to add another employee very, very soon to six. We also have a fellow through the SEDOM, and that's going to come onboard for a temporary position. So that will help bolster our capacity. And then six, did your department receive any ARPA funding? As I mentioned previously, yes. We had the 2.675 million. And that is to support programming over the next two years through December 31 of 2024. And as I mentioned, it's the LEED program, 2 million. The facade improvement program, which is a targeted program for specific larger projects. The four CIAs and then transition costs. And then the final one is, does your proposed budget include a carry-forward of ARPA funds? And, and if so, if, if so, how, how are you going to deal with the ultimate, you know, end of the ARPA funds? And so we're carrying forward that, that funding, as I mentioned earlier, over a two-year period. And then we anticipate our budget, most of that is for programming and grants, things that don't really involve hiring staff. So we anticipate, once those funds have been used over the next two years, that our budget obviously will go back to some semblance of what it has been, but we anticipate, you know, to continue to look for and expand other revenue sources. I think we've been very good at that over the years. And, you know, if you look at our budget and the amount that we ask from the city each year, it's, it's a small amount of money, then we were able to do that because we've been able to develop other funding sources over the years with the success of our projects.
Okay, thank you. Emily?
Hi, Carl. Hi, Chris. Thanks for being here. Just a couple of quick questions. So the SSCIA and the MACIA, I know they're both relatively new, but do you know how long these agencies will be collecting tax increment revenue before beginning operations?
Yeah, so originally, the plans themselves are 15 years. They have been operational and collecting taxes for a couple of years now. They're both approved, I believe, 2019. So they are currently programming those out per the development finance plan. It was anticipated, you know, through that process, it would take a few years to build up enough revenue to, you know, have greater impact of those programs. So they, they are looking to utilize those. They are, I understand, you know, growing. We've had great success there. So I believe we'll have some further updates this coming year.
Awesome. That's good to hear. And then, Carl, I think maybe you spoke to this. So just to confirm, the large increase in operational equipment and services, that's mostly one-time things because of the transition, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, how do you finalize the Brownfield Tifa captures?
How do we finalize them?
Yeah, the, the numbers here. How's that done?
So currently, they're just projected. We don't know until taxes are paid and you have final values and you have, you know, potential challenges to values and things. So those are the best estimate that we have currently.
Yeah. All right, those are, oh, thank you. That makes sense. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, Carl. So you mentioned that the 2.6 million in ARPA, ARPA dollars is for programming and grants. What type of grants are you talking about?
So the, the grant program, there's, there's grants and to support projects throughout the city. There's... There's a variety of things. We have the, so One and All, we are partnering with LEAP on that.
I'm sorry.
The One and All program. It's a business mentorship program. It's based on Alice Threshold. There's businesses, a great deal of those are City of Lansing businesses. So we're having an enhanced program there to support, further support those businesses. And then there's also a small business grant program that we are currently building out. It's not scheduled till likely later this year to be, to be launched. But that will be to support businesses to, to expand within the City of Lansing. There's also assistance for development projects and to assist BIPOC developers to participate in economic development. So there'll be some funding there to, to support projects and emerging developers.
Before you ask your next question, we just got a message that, on the TV, the committee of the whole is off right now. So if you're getting text messages, we're working on it. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Spitzley.
I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused about, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but it sounds like it's, it's more like business attraction. You're using the money for business attraction as well. Is that correct?
If I could add a little clarification, so the LEED program, you had the MRJEA process that the mayor led, and we, we all went through, and there was a large participation. And then within that was a subgroup on economic development and employment. And through that, there was various objectives and issues were identified. And then based on that, the, the EDC put together a proposal for the LEED, the LEED initiative and gain funding. And that, there's five different components in that. There's, and all of it's aimed at BIPOC-owned businesses or BIPOC developers. It's based on the recommendations of the, you know, of the committee of the MRJEA. And that is provide technical assistance to BIPOC-owned businesses and BIPOC individuals who want to start their own business. We're in the process of contracting with the contractor to provide that service. There's a grant program to help BIPOC businesses to either expand or start up. And those two really go together well, effect well. And then what we also are looking at in terms of, LEAP already had an existing program called One and All. And that One and All program was region-wide, and it had helped the underrepresented population. It taught them how to start their own business, how to be an entrepreneur. And it's a course that they go through. After they graduate from the course, they get $2,500 from LEAP. We, rather than reinventing the wheel, we recognize, why don't we identify then all of the graduates, past graduates of Lansing folks? And then any, they currently also have the program open. So any past or current graduates, they could also apply for additional, a grant of another 2,500 to help them. Because LEAP's already done the work to identify them and train them. They're in the City of Lansing, and so, but the thing is, is the most challenging part for any small business is startup capital. So we identified that as a need too. And then two other things is, we wanted to encourage communities, particularly BIPOC people in those communities and neighborhoods, to start to develop their own properties in their areas, to be developers, to be smaller-scale developers. They wanted to get into that, into that business essentially. And they develop their own community essentially, the way it used to be done in Lansing long ago. And it tries to diversify and spread out the base of developers in the City of Lansing. So we have additional funds in, but there's barriers to entering the development game and to try and eliminate those or at least fund some of those. And then the final thing was, there's geographic areas within the City of Lansing, for instance, southwest Lansing, where we want to make extra effort to promote projects and throw extra money at them to make them work. Because right now, even with our existing programs, it's still not enough to get them to happen. So, so it's like an enhanced version of that. And so that's more of the targeted geographic project. So all of those combined together, that's how that $2 million would be used. And we have a LEED committee, who's a subcommittee of our board, and working with staff to define those programs right now and to come up with the rules and the application process and the criteria that we want, we're trying to achieve and measure success. And so that's why that is a multi-year effort.
Are there any, are there BIPOC members on that committee?
There are.
Helping you do that?
Yes, primarily.
Okay. So, and I think that's great. I think it's all great. They sound like great programs. I won't be here next year, folks, so I hope next year during budget time, we ask for some metrics about how this is being done and how successful the programs are, because I think that's important. How are you, I, I think it's important, how are you getting this message out to the communities and to the people, the target population that you're seeking?
Right, yeah. And we look forward to that. We, we are in the process, we've already identified quite a few measures of success. We want to build an equity index essentially, and so that we can identify. And because, yeah, it's, one is we need like a baseline, right? And the second, have our efforts made a difference, right? And then when you, when you're trying to allocate the funds to, what criteria are you going to use to maximize whatever population or objective you're trying to achieve?
And, and continued support so that we're just not throwing money out front, but helping them
Right.
to be sustainable.
Right. And almost the vast majority of the money, the ARPA funds are going right to the programming itself, to the individuals, to the end user, and not to staff.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Councilmember Klaas and then Vice President Garza.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you for being here. First, the Michigan Avenue Corridor Authority, are they meeting in Rio Town instead of near the avenue?
I don't believe so. I believe most recently they've met at the Marshall Street Armory.
Okay. It was my understanding they were meeting at, in Rio Town, so that was just a concern of mine with accessibility for small businesses, especially the owner or operator. And then the, the second thing I want to ask, your end fund balance looks like 365,751 for this year on the Michigan Avenue Corridor Improvement Authority. You know, it's supposed to prevent the authority to prevent deterioration of that area. But what I'm getting from the, I live off of Michigan Avenue as well. But what I'm getting from the small businesses is that things are looking rough on Michigan Avenue, and they are. The empty buildings, the, the spray-painted signs that have been like that for six years. The, the buildings that are empty with ceilings caving as you walk down Michigan Avenue. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you know, what are we doing to improve the corridor? Because there's a really nice stretch, you know, near where I live, where there's a lot of businesses. And then there's other areas that are not as nice and are falling apart, like a Goodyear store that hasn't had a business in it in 20 years. I mean, I was a small child last time I was in there.
Yeah, so I, I think you speak to a lot of the initiatives that were laid out with the development and development finance plan. Currently, I understand there's, at the end of this coming fiscal year, there's going to be considerable dollars, probably not enough to take on all of the challenges. But they are programming that out per the development finance plan. There's a corridor facade program that's happening along the 2000 block. There's discussions to provide improvements all along the corridor. So I think they are.
To be fair, the 2000 block doesn't need the improvement. It's, it's, it's the other blocks in and out that, that need improvement. You know, business owners are ready to, to pack up and leave. Many of them have been there for 30 years because things look so bad. I mean, there's just no expenditures. It would be nice to see, like they do downtown, flowers line up the, the avenue. You know, if you're trying to stop the deterioration of the avenue, I mean, nowhere else in Michigan is there a Michigan Avenue that leads you to the state capitol. You know what I'm saying? Like, and, and people come and visit here and they think, boy, this is our town. Closed-up businesses and, and stuff caving down, and it looks terrible. Leaves six foot high. I would just, I guess I would just urge the Corridor Authority and LEDC to maybe invest a little bit in some, some, you know, I guess, window paint, flowers, something.
The good news is we can do that now because of combination of, there's 100,000 from, from ARPA. But because there has been quite a bit of development along the Michigan Avenue Corridor, the revenue, as you see, is there. Now it's just a matter of how best to use it.
Excellent. I appreciate you taking the questions.
Thank you, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, you guys. Thanks for being here tonight. I think you guys are doing great on Michigan Avenue, no offense, Klaas, compared to South Lansing. So I guess specifically, South Lansing, can you speak on any incentives or projects pertaining to South Lansing? Do you guys have any plans in like the Renaissance Zone? Is there anything that we don't know of currently that's, that's going on behind closed doors?
The Renaissance, I don't think there's a Renaissance Zone down there now, but we do have, we're, we're really devoting a lot of effort to South Lansing. We have at least three big projects underway right now. One would be the, the Old School at Pleasant Grove and Homes. We continue to work with the developer on that. And we have used, we have our brownfield revolving fund, which is a great tool. And we've put a million-dollar loan that could be forgivable, depending on the ultimate outcome of that development. Also, we have Logan Square, where we have another meeting coming up this week, where we've hired a consultant to come up with a development plan. And we want to partner with MEDC, the Brownfield Authority. We do, we have some revolving funds that we have put together from the other plans that is accumulated from developers paying taxes on the new development, so. And then there's another development that currently on Waverly Road that we're working with Forsberg on that. And I don't know the exact name. Maybe you can fill in a little of the detail on that. But before he does that, all of our programs, the facade program, everything we do is all available on South Lansing everywhere. It's not that it's excluded, and we're always looking for opportunities to be able to use it. And we have another project that we're working on at 820 West Miller. It's a young couple. There's a really horrible property there. It's a big corner. And they have bought the property and they want to redevelop it. We're working with them to get that done too. So, you know, we're doing, it's a challenge to do development down there because there's a lot of barriers. But I think now with our new tools and with the funds we have available, we'll be much more successful.
Thank you. And I may have misspoke. I said Renaissance Zone. Is it Opportunity Zone? That's, is that what it is? Opportunity Zone, that's like Edgewood, like where the Sam's Club, the old Sam's Club is, for instance? Is there anything going on there that we may not know about of the public, that we can actually at least share with the public?
We found the Opportunity Zone is, it's not the, you know, the magic bullet. It's, it's one tool in all of our toolbox. It works best, unfortunately, in areas that already have rising property values. And typically, that's not where it's needed. It's needed in areas where property values are, have been falling or are stagnant. So we think a lot of our other tools that we have, the, the brownfield, the facade, the ARPA funds, you know, all these other tools will probably be more useful if, if a developer comes along. For instance, Logan Square is in an opportunity zone. And if somebody wants to, that's one more reason for them to do it. But we find typically, it's not, it doesn't make the difference. So typically, we have to kind of layer the forms of assistance to, to get, because ultimately, you have to get a private developer or somebody to invest their money, and they look at risk and reward. So to the degree that we can lower the cost and kind of lower their risk, the better. And I think, you know, in the past, it's been really challenging, but now it's, I'm optimistic. I think we'll be doing several really major projects in South Lansing over the next year.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I guess I'll close with this. You know, on Edgewood, we have Target, we have Texas Roadhouse, and we have Celebration Cinema. I just hopeful that you guys are actively targeting that area so we don't end up seeing another closure of at least one of those three. Thank you.
Are there other questions for EDC? I have a couple of questions for you, Carl. Part of brownfields, we understand that it is a reimbursement for work that has been done. And so you don't pay that back unless the work has been done. But part of brownfields also is talking about jobs and how many jobs are going to be created. Can you tell me, because I, I must say, I was, have been, over the years, disappointed with the reporting system that we had with LEAP in following up to make sure that the progression of jobs that they talk about, that they're going to get. Now, whether we're talking brownfields, whether we're talking development agreements, whatever we're talking about, I'm, I'm looking at the gambit. How, how are we, EDC, looking at those metrics and verifying the information that, that is supplied to us when we initially pass these?
I do admit, in the past, it's been a challenge to, to go back and audit those projects. The development agreement was redone just a few years ago. I think it's much clearer now. It specifies, I think, in a very clear way, what the commitments of the developer, the business, whoever it is that's benefiting from the incentive, must do and by when. And so, and we audit that. We work now the way it's written too. We also have the assistance like the attorney's office. There's, there's a few other city folks that have to help us audit that. And that's always a challenge to be able to do that. We put as much of the responsibility of reporting on the developer and basically say, if you don't provide the report, providing the evidence that you met the terms of the agreement, then it can be revoked. So then we can call them up and say, if you don't provide this information, then we, we will report to the mayor, we will report to council, and this could be revoked. And usually that, that motivates them pretty well. But that has to be built into the system. The other thing too is, from a funding standpoint, ultimately, like a lot of cities, there's a compliance person, right? That, and that's their job, is to follow up on those and make sure it gets done. And we're, we're busy, we're small, so it's, it's more of a challenge for us to do that. So to the degree that we could figure out how best to, to delegate that work, maybe we hire a consultant to do that work, something like that, where we know it's getting done. And somebody, that's their, essentially, one of their main responsibilities. And really make sure and follow up that, and we've got, you know, in the agreement, it specifies pretty clear. So just a matter of scheduling those, doing the audits. One thing too is, we want to do retention calls, where you call on a business. That's a good way to check. You do a retention call. You say, you know, two, you know, two years ago, you received a brownfield plan. You committed to doing this. How are you doing? And so then we can find out more about them. And I think that quite often, they're busy and they forgot to report. Historically, almost always, with rare exceptions, they have met or exceeded what was in the agreement. Sometimes they need more time, but historically, like in, in my tenure here at the city, it's very rarely do, do they not do the project at all, or they fall so short that it gets revoked. So, you know, because they know that, and typically, the targets they're going to give us are the ones that they're pretty sure they can hit. But I, I do agree with you that we can also do a better job of following up and reporting, making it transparent too. Because a lot of folks will say, well, whatever happened, how can I find out more, what happened to that company? So we're working on that, and I agree, there's room for improvement there.
And how are we following up, especially when we're talking construction jobs, to make sure income taxes are being paid?
That's, yeah, that's not primarily our responsibility, but certainly, you know, working with the treasurer and others. It's always a challenge, especially when you have workers that are coming in from outside of town. And they're supposed to be, I mean, you can tell people here, this is the law, this is what you're supposed to do. But we all know that some folks don't follow that law. So then it's like, how do you, how do you find that out? And who enforces that? And that's something that's, you know, typically been out of our, our ability to do. So, you know, that's another thing, you know, it's a challenge.
I think it's something that we've got to come up with a, a solution for.
Right.
Again, when we're being told that this project is going to, with the abatements and everything else that they're going to get, we're going to end up with this amount of money from. of money from income taxes and blah, 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 and with temporary and permanent jobs. And we realize that the temporary jobs could be 200 people on a job, putting that building up. And the actual employees on that job could end up being 50 employees. Well, we know that that, that period of time, that you had those 200 that were there, we need to capture, even if it's a half a percent, we need to be capturing that half a percent.
And quite often, the employment level of a company, especially in a larger company, fluctuates over time. Like, they may have hit that goal, but then it falls below. The actual development itself is easier to track, because first of all, you drive by and you see the projects done, right? And then secondly, it gets assessed. And so, there is some indication of the value there. And also, in terms of, there's a permits that are pulled, you can look at, too, to see what they value. So, the physical assets, and then those stay, that's easier to measure. And then, for instance, the Brownfield program and OPR program, they were never intended to be employment generators. They were intended to be, to get properties redeveloped into clean-up properties. And that, to the degree that it's associated with job creation, that's, that's a plus.
But when you're up here selling it to us, you're giving us those numbers, too.
Right. I agree.
So, you know, and at one time, we did have someone in HRCS that did compliance.
Right.
And, you know, when that person retired, that was something that was not filled again. And that's, that's not there. I mean, that person actually went out on the job and asked for payroll and, and those types of things.
Right. The temporary construction jobs are very difficult. The long-term permanent jobs, there is record, I think the treasurer can, can look, can't pull up and share individual names, but certainly can look at the amount of city taxes that are coming from that employer, from that location. So that would be a pretty good proxy, too, if that's gone up dramatically and stays up. So, but that, that I think is easier, but none of it's easy. And we do need to come up with a system, I think, to be able to do that. And if, you know, ultimately, it's important to all of us. So, you know, perhaps figuring that out, then, and more importantly, figuring out who's going to do it and how is it funded.
All right. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you. And before we move into HRCS, we're going to take a five-minute break. So that, oh, City Attorney? Okay. Well, we'll do City Attorney, and then we'll take a five-minute break. Since you're all ready, Jim, we don't want to-
I'm all ready. I was ready last night.
I, I know. We don't want you to panic here.
Thank you for making, allowing me to make this presentation. And we'll answer the seven questions. But to give some context to the first two, we have two vacant ACA positions, Assistant City Attorney. These are bargaining unit positions, so they're subject to a collective bargaining agreement. The, we want to add a new deputy city attorney for economic development. Our office represents every board and authority in the city, including the Board of Water and Light. And we offer services to all the economic development agencies that you heard here today. And that's under the charter. So, it was desirable to create a new position for development. Now, intuitively, you would want to just reclassify one that you have, but the unions will not allow us to do that. So that's why we're adding the new position. Now, that will still leave us with two positions. We only intend to fill one of those. And the other change that has to happen with number two is that we prosecute four courtrooms two days a week, but we're getting a lot of requests for litigation with the housing and code enforcement. And so we want to remove one of those prosecutors to-
Jim, can I have you bring that mic a little bit closer to you?
Have one of the prosecutors actually devote full-time attention to the litigation front. Other than that, the, number three, no increases, no equipment purchases. Number five, this is not transparent. There's no budgetary implications. But when we fill the police legal advisor, that's one position we will fill, Assistant City Attorney. We're going to give that person total FOIA administration. Right now, it's shared throughout the office. Did we get ARPA money? No. And we have nothing to carry forward. Just because the question's been raised, we are members of the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. That's our insurance carrier. It's a statutorily created body. We have insurance with them. Two million dollars of insurance, 1 million deductible, 10 million in excess coverage. Every case that either we, well, every case that we get into the city is worked on between our office and MMRMA about the best course of action, whether it should be in-house or not in-house. When we get sued, the city gets sued, and then usually, officers get sued. And under conflict rules, we have to provide defense counsel to the individual officers because of conflicts of interest and because of indemnification procedures in the collective bargaining agreement. So that's why you will see cases where our office is representing the city, and outside counsel is representing the individual officers. Again, everything is done in connection with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. They also offer consultant services. For many investigations we've done this year, they have that stable of investigators, stable is a bad word, but you know what I mean, that we use them. And they've been around for 30 years, and again, they were created by statute. I don't know if there are any other questions.
Okay. Are there questions for this? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't have any. Thank you.
I didn't see anything. That's why.
I just thought I would check.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley.
Since you did open the door, Jim, so where does, where does the money come from, then, for fines that, that are under a million dollars?
Well, again, this council adopted a resolution in 2003 to allow the city attorney to settle cases within the deductible amount. And then has to report that to the Ways and Means. We do that through a report. The money is spread out. Any judgments of maybe outside legal fees or investigative expenses is spread. And there's a line item. It's spread among all the departments. That's where it's coming from. You won't find a line item.
Right. I knew that. I just wanted to, I knew, I knew the answer to the question, but I just wanted to make sure. So, basically, it comes from our general fund.
Yeah. Well, it's allocated-
Right.
To departments.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Councilmember Cos.
Jim, do you know how much we're spending in outside counsel right now per year?
I don't have it right now handy, but yes, I can get that. That's not a problem.
All right. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Are there other questions? Just a couple, Jim. I remember when Janine McIntyre was here, and we were spending an exorbitant amount on outside counsel. Can, when you get our numbers, is there a way to look at, at what was previously being-
Sure.
-spent and what is currently being spent?
Yeah, we can do that, as long as finance has the records. And we'll look at that. But I think you saw in the report that we are reducing litigation. So, and we're, you know, Amanda O'Boyle will now be, and I know some people will like to hear that, will be the lead litigator in-house. And we're going to develop, you know, take her out of prosecution, so she has more time. So, yes, I think we're reducing it. The goal is to get very little litigation where we are defendant.
Okay. I also know that we had a problem at that time with bills that were automatically being paid and not being reviewed. For, apparently, we had this group that was responsible for our attorney's fees and would automatically pay those. We would put so much in their account, and then they would pay from that. Is that a practice that's still going on?
I wasn't aware of that practice. I review every bill.
It was a third party.
Okay. I review every bill. I don't know what, I'll inquire as to what was going on before, but I'm not familiar. I look, I see every bill.
Okay.
And sign off on every bill, after it goes through other folks who actually have knowledge of the litigation.
Okay. All right. And I think you answered the question. When you, when you said that it comes from other departments, let's, let's just say, we'll use EDP as an example. There's, there's an issue with EDP. There's a lawsuit. So, the money isn't coming necessarily out of their budget. It's coming across the-
I asked that question myself in looking at this budget, and it's looks, it appears it's spread across all departments, period. And, and I might mention also that under MMRMA, we receive a return on equity based upon the claims that we submit to them. So we get money back from MMRMA. It's called return on equity in that, from that authority. But my, my knowledge is that it, this is spread just uniformly across all departments.
Would that be under the insurance and bonds?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the question.
So, that line item that's in every, in every department, it falls under that?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you for the city attorney. How do you decide what is in the best interest of the city when it comes to settling versus pursuing? And how do you balance, like, if there's a possible legal defense versus what's decent and the majority of people would think is decent to do?
Well, that's not, I mean, you look at the whole case. You consult with others in the office. We consult with MMRMA, see what their thoughts are on the matter. You look at what stage of the litigation is. In some cases, you've gone up to the Court of Appeals in Cincinnati. And, you know, because you, we've won in the lower court, and it goes to Cincinnati. And then they said that backs out of the risk becomes greater. And at that point, we might decide that we've got to find a number to settle the case, or else you go to mediation or ADR. There, it's just not easy to say that now. In some cases, we have motions pending to dismiss cases. Then the other question is, you dismiss the city and leave the officers there, unhanging? You know, there's, there's all this that comes into play in assessing whether or not we should settle a case or go forward with it.
Yeah, just caution on looking towards your outside references of, you know, what's best for the city. Because I know, like, for example, we have different opinions on things. I'm sure we all do. So, it's kind of like, where's the, I guess, how are you using the discretion? And who are, I guess, who are you talking to about it? And it sounds like our insurance company and other people in the office, for the most part.
Right. The, the insurance company does not call the shots. They are simply consultants. They provide the insurance. They provide a battery of experts for us to use. The, whether the case may be, we consult with the city council every quarter on what our thoughts are on litigation. Nothing's going to be settled without the city attorney's approval. I mean, that's period. I mean, if that answers that question. But it's in connection with consultation in our office and MMRMA.
I guess just for my last request, if our next quarterly, if you could just offer some options, just like more regularly instead of whatever we do.
We're available anytime. We have, we keep monitoring litigation. We have reports, and we can give you a status up to date on every piece of litigation the city's involved in.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of do that, but like, options on, on going forward, like, well, we thought about this way, but this way is what we recommend.
Yeah. Sure.
Thank you.
We're willing to entertain those discussions. I mean, we, we have a great staff, but I don't want to say we have a monopoly on all the wisdom, although some people would like that to happen. But we're willing to, to discuss it with you clearly.
Other questions? Just one final question, Jim. And that has to do with the insurance. Is there, because a municipality is sued all the time, I mean, you walk outside the street and, you know, somebody decides to sue you, is there the potential of raising what our cost is for insurance based on the number of suits?
That should be a part of their assessment, the, the authorities' assessment on our claims and giving us a return on equity.
Okay.
Give you an example, we had Safety National Insurance Company, Straight Insurance, prior to 2017. They would only insure up to 1.5 million dollars.
Yeah, I remember that.
And so that's why we've gone with MMRMA. And, I mean, if, we can actually talk about that with council, if, we can go out for bids, perhaps, to see what else we can get out there. But we haven't really discussed that.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Seeing nothing. Thank you, Jim, for your report. And we're going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Would you like to call to, back to order the committee of the floor? And our next group up is HRCS. So if we could have you up to the table. You need to, I think there's chairs around, if you need to pull them around and then move people as they speak.
Musical chairs, as long as you got one to sit in. Okay. All right. Ms. Coleman, we will open it up to you. You know, you've got the questions in, in front of you. And then we will again turn to Emily and to council members.
Good evening, council members.
Is the green light on, dear?
How about now?
Okay.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for having us. With us this evening are Joe McDonald, our Housing Ambassador. We have Tony Young, who is our Contract Management Administrator, and then Kim Dunbar, who's a contract manager that also works with our budget. And between the three of us, we should be able to respond to your questions. I'd like to start off, as you suggested, Councilwoman Wood, and that is with the seven questions that you provided us. And then we'll go from there to your, your questions. First question, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? No real difference other than personnel, which reflect an increase in wages and fixed benefits. Are there any changes in services that your department, that your department is responsible for? And if so, why? No changes. Are there any rate increase or fees increases? And if so, why? None. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? No. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics. No new positions have been contracted, just the ones that we currently have. Did your department receive any ARPA funding in the current fiscal year? And if so, how was it spent? Yes, we did. We received 400,000. That's designated for the Lansing School District. For a graduate specialist, this is an ongoing two-year program that is currently underway. For a graduate specialist, this is an ongoing two-year program that is currently underway. Does your proposed budget include a carryforward of ARPA funds? And if not, how will your department programs change because of not having those ARPA funds? Yes. Unspent ARPA funds intended for Lansing School District will carry forward, but will have no impact on our department.
Emily.
Hi, thank you all for being here. Good to see you. Can you explain the basic human services and the addressing racial justice and equity, those numbers? What calculation generates those or how do you come to those numbers and what all goes into that?
I'm sorry, please restate your question.
Sure. The basic human services line items, so basic human services and then addressing racial justice and equity. Can you provide either, you know, a calculation or just what goes into coming up with that number?
The racial justice is the, well, they increased, the council increased our general funds to 1.35. 1.25 is intended for general funds, the agency, and the difference would go towards race and equity in the community.
Okay, great. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, council member questions? Councilmember Garza, or Vice President Garza?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. Thanks for being here. Could you explain, I see from the adopted budget from fiscal year 2023 to the proposed budget, we have a 13.5% increase, approximately $225,000.
I will defer to Kim Dunbar with that question.
Sure. Councilman, can you state exactly which numbers you're referring to?
So it says under total personnel, I see a steady increase over the last couple of years. And it says for the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget, it would be on page 151 of 169. It says a 13.5% increase.
Yes.
Approximately $225,000.
Yes, I see that. Those increases are specifically for increase in wages and fixed benefits as a result of contract negotiations and other standard costs that are calculated by our finance department. So those numbers came from the finance department. We did work with them, but we do not calculate our own numbers.
Okay, so no additional?
Just a minute. No, not that I'm aware of. It's not today. Can you please find out what's going on? Is it?
Fallen Officers Memorial?
I didn't think it was today.
Okay.
Okay. It's the Fallen Officer Memorial. Okay.
So just for clarity, no additional staff? It's just for pay raises and additional costs? Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there other questions? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I have two questions. The first one is on page 152. It's under operating. Department operations. It looks like there's a 56.4% increase.
152.
And maybe that's the same thing as you told me about the last time. Okay. I think it's the difference between the actual, the adopted and the proposed budget. But it looks like it went up. FY 2023 projected budget says $59,097. Oh, gosh. Never mind. Apologies. I'll strike that last question. The next question I'd like to ask you about is, you guys house the police commission investigator who conducts complaint? So can you explain a little bit about that? And do you have metric numbers on how many complaints you've gotten and how are they adjudicated?
I don't have the specifics or any details with regard to her work. She reports to me administratively, but she works directly with the police commission with regard to the complaints. And so I know she has plenty of them. I just can't give you the number.
So is she, is she in your office to like have a one step removed from the police department? Is that why she's in your office?
That is correct.
I mean, when you were here the last time, you already talked about auditing a lot of the programs and how you audit the programs, like Haven House and some of the others, and that you don't do regular audits. You kind of do spot auditing. Is that, was that, is that an accurate recitation of what we talked about?
Yes, that's accurate.
So my question is, so when you do that and you do the spot, how do you then determine if somebody, the ones you don't do the audits on, how do you determine if they are in fact meeting the requirements of the grant that you gave to them, the dollars that you gave to them?
Yes, they report quarterly to each of the contract managers who review their reports and look at the progress that they're making in the programs. So every single grant reports quarterly.
And is there a process by which an entity that is not performing as expected? What does that process look like?
Generally, we call them or we email them and ask them for an explanation. Also, part of the quarterly report, there's a narrative section that talks about where we ask about seven questions and they're all about the progress. So they're to report any reasons, any barriers that they may have encountered in the last quarter in providing their programs. Also, any trends that they've seen out there in the community because we're always constantly looking for needs and wanting to know what their perspective is in what they're seeing out there in serving people, the different populations that they serve. So they usually do a report in the narrative about any obstacles or problems that they're encountering if there's an issue. For instance, during COVID, there was a lot of discussion going there and a lot of answers to that question. And we created a specific COVID question to ask them if they were running into barriers in providing their programs because of COVID. And then we would follow up. We follow up with them if we see something in that report that we believe we need to discuss with them further.
Go right ahead.
So, oh, my mic wasn't on. I was wondering what was going on there.
And I was just going to add, Councilmember Spitzley, and that is if what they've shared with us is unsatisfactory, we have done corrective action.
And I appreciate that. I guess I'm wondering if you're, if you're spot auditing and you're not auditing everyone, you know, how do you know based on the reports? I mean, you know, people falsify reports all the time. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, we're here and to be totally transparent and truthful, you know, we all appear here anecdote, you know, anecdotally about one organization or another that's, you know, not doing their job or is not providing service to residents. And so, you know, I always find that I just pick up the phone and call and ask. But, you know, for those folks who are watching and who want to know, I think it's important to just, you know, hear what happens and how do you make sure that the dollars that flow through you guys and go to these organizations are being spent appropriately.
Right. The other thing we do every year before we issue contracts is that we review all of their, what we call governance documents. And so these are things like their financial statements and their audits, their actual financial audit from an auditor, types of things. So we review all those kinds of things. And usually in those, they would have whatever the expenditures were related to. The city would be listed there with their other funding sources.
My last question, Madam President.
Go right ahead.
What, where are we in getting the folks from 222 Homes Road out of hotels and in housing? What's the status of that?
Councilmember Spitzley, we don't do a lot with housing placement. Our work with, the red tags would be if they are under duress and need some assistance, we provide that assistance. We'll even go out and provide that assistance. But we don't have a role in it otherwise with regard to getting people placed and moving people around.
But we did, we are paying for hotels though, right? For the people who have been displaced.
Yes, yes.
So once we put them in the hotels, what happens after then? And I mean, we don't, we don't work with whomever to make sure that they're getting, we're paying a lot of money to make sure they're put in housing?
Yes. Yes, we do. In fact, there's not very many remaining in the hotel as of this evening that when they are, those individuals in particular were provided, were worked with around a housing plan by way of the Advent House. And so they continued to work with them on options and opportunities for housing. But what we also learned with regard to those folk is that the CMTAB had agreed to take on their hoteling. And so those folk no longer need to look for housing because they will be transitioned back to their, either their old dwelling or into one of the pink tag homes. So CMTAB is handling it now.
So, so, okay, because I just want to make sure I'm, so they're going to be transitioning back into homes that are not, that are not pink or red tagged?
That is our understanding.
Okay, because I misunderstood what you said because I thought I heard you say something else different.
Did I say something different?
I thought you said, I thought you heard, that's why I asked. I don't know if you did.
Yeah, no, no, they would definitely have to be units that have been approved.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what, that's what I wanted to make sure.
I think the city attorney.
Yeah, I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, I think the city attorney wanted to.
Just a status update on the question that you raised. We have, you know, we obtained a temporary restraining order from Judge Jamo together with a lot of affirmative obligations on CMTAB. We have now extended that by stipulation, so it remains in place. And CMTAB has to pay for the hoteling of all these folks. Now, as they receive code approval on some of their units, they could be moving them back in. But we're in constant discussion with CMTAB on this and all their properties right now.
Are they going to proactively pay what we've already, are they going to reimburse the city?
I haven't had a discussion with them. We are trying to put together some settlement documents involving not only homes, but all the other properties.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I want to talk about shelter capacity. And I want to believe that it's a priority for everybody to have Lansing as a city where if somebody found themselves that down where they're going to actually have to spend the night outside, which we have a lot of people doing, there should be a place where they could go and stay in shelter. Whether it's the wintertime, the summertime, or in between, it seems like we should do that. So if you could kind of point out where in the budget shelter costs are or for housing people who need it, not housing, sheltering people who need it for now, whether that's paying outside agencies. And then when you pay them, what is it? Do they guarantee we'll have 30 spots available? Whatever it is, because I know that there's not enough spots available for everybody. So what is it that we're paying for, like spots or just to run it? And what can we do to build that capacity?
I think what we've talked about prior to now is the need to supplement our current shelter capacity for reasons that you just stated, that oftentimes they are at capacity and there's very little room for additional folks. What we've done in that particular case so that no one is outdoors and that everyone has a safe place to be, we have put people in hotels until such time that we could get them into a shelter, which hasn't taken too, too long in some cases and in other cases, a little bit longer, but.
Okay, so that is an emergency option.
That is an emergency option.
An expensive one, but my question is, so do you know, is there like, can you kind of say where some of the dollars are going? Since this is about budget, where are some of the dollars going that goes towards the capacity? And then how can we build capacity instead of just kind of like overflowing people? Because I think, I think there's pretty much always a capacity issue. I don't know if there's certain times of the year maybe, but from, I deal with a lot of clients that are homeless and they always talk about not being able to find a place to stay.
Councilman Jackson, it's been more the reality just recently since the pandemic than anything else. Many people have been finding themselves outdoors and having to use our hoteling options when it's available. But also having options at the shelters when they're available. We continue to try and work with people to make sure that no one is left outdoors. Those people that we know, we've taken care of. And we've worked at trying to get them into shelters as soon as we possibly can. I know we've had discussions in the past and probably more recently about the possibility of supplementing shelters with another shelter. And so we're in the process of working through and talking through some of those details. But until such time as that happens, I do have a place in the budget called Warming Center. And I believe there's $113,000 or $103,000, something like that. $103,000 that's set aside for Warming Center that will further help individuals who are finding themselves outdoors.
Thank you. If I could just request one thing, it would be to keep us or me or everybody updated because there's a lot of people in the community, whether they need a shelter or not, that are really interested in having a solution. And when we don't really know that there's plans, we just all kind of talk about it without any, like, strategy. Because if you say, we need capacity by having some funding for, to supplement, so and so, so that they can buy this building and make it whatever, then I would like to know that so that I can vouch for that and try to fit it in the budget.
Happy to do so. We have submitted a proposal, both state and federal, to assist with an additional shelter for a total of $877,000 with hopes of increasing capacity significantly. So we'll know more once we find out if they're willing to fund. Then we need to secure ongoing funding so that we can keep the doors open. But we are moving in that direction and we do have a budget.
And then just last part, if you could even suggest anything that I could ask to have the budget amended towards that would help? Because I just don't want to just say any old vague thing that can't be done or work with our auditor and not have what could actually be moved forward because I want to be able to move something forward. So if we could all work on maybe like an amendment or a suggestion for this year, that's what I'll be trying to vote for.
I appreciate you, Councilman Jackson. Thank you for that.
Okay, I have Councilmember Koss and then Vice President Garza.
Thank you, President Wood. Thank you for being here. So I'm looking at this HRCS General Grant Fund Recommendations for fiscal year '23 and '24. We've got just over $2 million going to these groups. That's a, that's a lot of money. And I look at some of these and I, I've never heard of some of these places. And I wonder, in some of them, like the Capital Area District Library, I mean, we pay that in our property tax, so I'm not sure why we're giving them money. But I guess my question on this is how are we selecting these groups?
This, this happens through our applications process. We publicize it widely, post it on our website, try to get the word out that we're taking in applications to be considered. We kicked off the process this year in early December by having a community forum where we invite anybody, potential applicants, anyone who's interested. And we explain the types of programs that can be funded and talk about what the application process involves, answer any questions. And we've recorded that. We have that recording up on our website if you want to see that. And then after that happens, then we set the date for the applications to be submitted. Once they are submitted, the HRCS Advisory Board does the scoring, looks at every application, and we provide them training to do that. at every application, um, and we provide them training to do that. Once that's done, those recommendations come forward to our director, um, and we vet them through the staff. And then, um, recommendations go to, um, the director and then the mayor, and then the advisory council reviews them again. Um, so that's sort of how those get selected.
So, so the advisory board picks, the advisory board picks, um, the, the applicants?
They score, they score the applications.
Okay, so.
And then that's reviewed.
Sure. The advisory board volunteers, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And according to the ordinance. Um, and then recommendations are made. Um, the director reviews those and then makes recommendations to the mayor, who makes the final decisions. Um, so that's how the selection happens. And, um, just so you know, this year we had, um, eighty-seven applications, which was a very good number. And I think, um, we encouraged more this year because of the new process that we used. Um, we used an online application process for the first time. Um, people were very pleased and happy with it and the advisory board was even happier because it really facilitated the scoring process.
When it comes to the accounting.
So out of those eighty-seven that we received, seventy-six programs were selected for funding. So that's about an eighty-seven percent rate.
Thank you. So, when, when it comes to this money, um, do these groups, um, provide you with accounting? And do we make that accounting public?
I don't know what you mean by.
I mean, we're gonna give active living for all adult day services twenty-five thousand dollars. Do they, it sends you some kind of an accounting of how they're gonna spend taxpayer dollars?
Yes, that's part of the application.
And is that public?
We have not posted it publicly, no.
We, we don't.
We don't make, how they spend that money?
We don't make their applications public at this point, no. They have submitted for funding and.
Okay.
We haven't done that. But they, they, um, it's a competitive process, so that's part of the reticence, I think. Um, but they give us, I can talk about the application in detail, but we can also refer you to our website where you can see a copy of the application as well as the budget that they submit with.
So the, the basic human services that we provide, we're not actually providing them, outside groups provide them, we just answer phone calls?
We just answer phone calls?
No, I believe we go a little bit further than phone calls, Councilman.
No, sure.
Uh, we've gotten quite a few, uh, requests for services and I believe they were, there were five hundred and.
Six hundred.
It was six, no, the total of people that needed help, it was five hundred and, hold on, I knew you, I knew somebody was gonna ask that question, hold on. We have a number of, of services that we provide out of our office. And our staff are constantly going.
What services?
And it's more than just a phone call. It's all kinds of follow-up and hand-holding as well, which we don't have a problem with, but making sure that we coordinate, um, they're, making sure that they are able to remain in their, their housing, helping to make sure that their utilities remain, helping to make sure if there were furnishings that were needed, that they're provided, helping to make sure, we do a number of things.
So you're connecting them to groups that do that, correct?
We connect them to groups that do that, but we also contribute in a lot of ways.
'Cause I spend a lot of time doing that myself.
Mm-hmm.
So essentially, you're a switchboard and it's one point three million in active personnel that we could just farm out?
The, the Councilman Koss, I don't wanna, I don't think you should refer to the folk, the work that folks do in the office as switchboard. It goes way beyond that. I mean, I, I understand.
You're just making phone calls, correct?
Well, maybe you should come and spend a day with us and you'll see exactly what happens in our office.
Well, I, I would, but I'm helping people get off the streets because there's no one helping them.
Okay.
Helping them find places to live.
All right.
Okay.
You're done?
Thank you.
Okay, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, so I have a follow-up from my, one of my previous questions and also a couple of other questions. But, um, you stated earlier, the, the increase of thirteen point five percent, um, for, for staffing, uh, salary increases. In the line item, it says the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, currently you have ten, um, staff and going to eleven. So are you actually, are you hiring another person?
We aren't hiring another person, what we're doing is filling vacancies. We have a couple of vacancies in our office and that's what we're doing. We don't have a new person that's been hired.
Okay, all right. Well, in the, well, in the line item budget, it says currently there are ten and you're going to eleven, so.
Ah, she just reminded me that it includes contractors.
Contractors as well, okay, all right. So, so if this is, I guess I'm just trying to, to understand the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I mean, if there's ten employees, I do the math, that's twenty-five thousand dollars of cre, increase per, uh, per, uh, belt buckle, so to speak. So, I mean, are you guys doing that great of a job to where you get a twenty-five thousand dollar increase?
The, um, increase would also include any fringes related to the actual positions. As I stated before, we do not calculate the cost of the positions. Those are confidential numbers that come from HR that finance helps us to, uh, create and place in the budget.
Okay, all right, thank you. So I guess I'll, I'll move on. Um, I, on this line item here, I'm looking at, it says Holy Cross Services New Hope Community Center Hotel, Holy Cross Services New Hope's Community Center Shelter. What, what is it different? 'Cause I'm seeing there's two different, uh, ones for fifty thousand and ones for a hundred and five thousand.
Right. Um, the hoteling program that's run from the Holy Cross Services is primarily serving families who may be on the street, who for some reason can't go into shelter. Um, they have, most of their funding comes from, um, MDH, uh, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And then we provide a small amount of funds to help supplement that program. Um, they don't always have, in the past, their history of that has been that they didn't have staffing to help to provide services and supportive services to the people that were in the hotels. Um, and they also use some of that funds to supplement their larger grant. Uh, but that helps to stretch those dollars further, um, for people in the community that need it. And they, it's limited, they can only house, I don't know, is it like eighteen households at a time for the funds that they have? So the work that we have been doing more recently is getting people off the streets. It has taken that program and this to keep more people off the streets, so.
Okay.
That's what that program is. The other one is shelter. Um, uh, Holy Cross is one of our largest emergency shelters. Um, and they get funds from a number of different sources. Um, but we, as a community, also value keeping people off the streets. And that's partly what that fund is used for, is for sheltering. So they're two different programs.
Under the same entity? I, I guess I'm just trying.
Yes, they're two different programs run by the same agency.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, and I guess my last question is, is what is HRCS doing to, uh, get the, the Ingham County more involved in your efforts?
What are we doing to get Ingham County more involved in our efforts?
More recently, our efforts have really been, um, targeting the individuals themselves. We have really taken a service-first approach to the many individuals that have approached us for assistance. Um, so we have not engaged them recently. Um, so we've been working at it ourselves, trying to get it all taken care of. And when you say Ingham County, are you talking with regard to what service are you thinking?
Any services that they may be able to provide to help.
Okay.
Do, to, you know, funding, give, give a funding to, to you to help duplicate your services?
Yeah, yeah. And she was just reminding me that Sarah funding is Ingham County. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
Over the last few years, um, we were selected by MSHDA, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, to be the fiduciary for Ingham County for the Sarah program, the COVID Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And with that program, over the last two years, we have, um, given out over sixty-three million dollars to Ingham County residents and landlords to help keep people in their homes. So we do a lot of programming where we work with the state and the federal government to work collaboratively in order to help pe, keep people off the street. When that program first started, we were only granted fourteen point seven million dollars. But because, uh, MSHDA was pleased with the way that we were running the program, they continued to give us funding and we continued to serve the public. So that's how we got up to over sixty-three million dollars just in rental, um, assistance to landlords and, and, uh, customers.
All right, thank you.
Um, I have Councilmember Brown and then Councilmembers, uh, Spitzley.
Thank you, President Wood, thank you for being here this evening. Um, I guess I'll kind of re, reverse the order if I can ask a few questions. Um, relating to Ingham County, it sounds like you said we were a pass-through. Uh, but relating to the thirteen, uh, point five percent and saying there are several needs in our community, are you working collaboratively with the county since, uh, these are county residents as well? Are we receiving any partnership funds to provide services directly to the individuals? Uh, because from what I understand, the Sarah funds are over?
The Sarah funds have, um, just changed and migrated into what is called housing stability funding. Um, when you say the Sarah fundings are, funding is over, it's still considered Sarah funding, but it's called housing stability services now, which basically funds case management and administrative costs. Because the actual funding for financial assistance, which would have included the rental assistance portion of that fund, has, um, run out basically at this point. So we're just waiting and hoping that the state will outline new initiatives that we will be able to participate in to continue with rental assistance-type programs. But at this time, it's, uh, basically case management and administration, which basically, for those people who, uh, received rental assistance in the past, now what's happening is there's more of a, um, the target is to help them get placed in housing.
So are we receiving funds to supplement the operation of HRCS from the county?
These are not county funds, these are state funds.
Right, so.
For Ingham County. So yes, we receive funds from the state to fund, um, Ingham County residents or.
So do we receive county funds and partnering because you said there's such a great need? So Lansing, the city of Lansing is inside the, uh, county of Ingham. Are you rece, are you partnering with Ingham County to receive funds, not state funds, to help partner with the services?
No, we receive state funds and we are the fiduciary for Ingham County, which includes, um, you know, other cities in our county, not just Lansing. But no, we do not receive any funding directly from Ingham County itself.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, last year we spoke about, uh, Healing Hands Urgent Care Center. Um, from what we understand, we heard from several constituents, they ran their investigation and lost their license. And you guys were gonna look at, um, you know, what their status was. And we talked about, you know, them receiving grants. And I see, um, here again, there's twenty-five thousand, uh, recommended or awarded to them? Could we have an update as far as that status?
Yeah, we are reviewing all of the documents before we write any of these contracts. We'll ensure that they are not having issues. Um, I don't recall that question from last year.
Yes, last year they were shut down, there was a notice on the door and they can't prescribe medications and so on and so forth. I don't know what the, the full status was, but.
Okay, well.
Several people came and you guys were gonna look at it.
We'll check into that.
You were gonna look at it for the award for last, for last.
Yeah, if you hear things like that, we wouldn't mind hearing from you.
We did last year before we awarded the money for last year. So this is last year and now we're looking at recommending this year. Um, additionally, um, the.
And who was investigating them?
Uh, I, I can't remember at this point whoever the m, medical authorities are. I mean, I thought you guys were doing reports and looking at them after, you know.
They, well, I've heard enough, I mean, I don't, I don't recall this from last year, so I just, you know, I'll check on it.
Okay, um, the other thing was we spoke on a previous meeting about, uh, I guess qualitative data. You talk a lot about quantitative data as far as the audits and the financials, but how are you determining if there's good customer experience, uh, with these agencies? As well as, uh, we have not seen, or I have not seen a report as far as the outcomes that they were, um, stating that they were gonna achieve and the outcomes that they actually achieved? We have no information, uh, or I don't, I don't know if anyone else on council does. As far as we allocated this money last year, this is what they said they were gonna achieve in this year, this is what they achieved, so that's why we're recommending them get funding again. Do you have that information?
We do have that information, that's in the quarterly reports.
Okay, can, how can we, how can I get the information for myself? So I can understand that these people are in good standing and what, for example, if we gave fifty-five thousand dollars to Boys and Girls Club and they said that they were serving two children? And then I can say, "Well, wow, you know, fifty-five thousand for two children, you know, why is it only two children?" I don't have any of that information to determine, uh, whether I could support the recommendation this year based on the outcome that was achieved last year.
Okay. We, um, that will take us some work, so you need to give us a little bit of time to put that together for you. We review all of them, so we are comfortable with their achievements and their outcomes.
And I know.
So that's, that's sort of the work that we do besides, you know.
And I know that we had.
Answering phone calls.
Thank you. And I know that we had spoke about, um, surveying the actual constituents receiving services, it seemed one-sided, and I think, uh, Councilwoman Spitzley spoke about if someone has a report, people can put anything on a report. How are you guys having that, I guess, other eye to make sure that, uh, the services that are, um, being provided are being provided? Not only are they, you know, have great accounting system, but are they having good customer experience in the individuals receiving the services? Are they signing off saying, "I did receive these services"? How are you, um, being able to, I guess, um, dot your i's, cross your t's as far as real service to real people?
Yeah. Uh, Councilman Brown, basically our approach is very similar to that, that HUD or the, or the federal programs use in terms of, again, spot checking as you indicated, uh, doing some monitoring, going out, checking the records, uh, looking at the quarterly reports, monitoring the budget by way of the quarterly reports and their requests for payments, uh, all of those kinds of things. Um, with regard to customer service per se, I would imagine that we could probably ask them to do a survey or provide a survey with some outcomes at the end that would help address that matter. But I, I would venture to say that we have not gotten, we have not gotten any complaints. And so, uh, without that, we would have no reason to doubt that they aren't being served. Um, other than that, uh, we, we, we have a look.
Well, I'm not gonna go there, but I know several constituents have got with me over the last year and a half and complained about not getting proper services from the agency, so.
Okay.
I don't see how that's.
Did you refer those individuals to us? That had the complaints?
Absolutely.
To me directly?
Absolutely.
Okay, 'cause I, I promise you, I don't recall.
Okay.
But I'm more than happy to follow up with anybody with regard to any concerns that they might have around any services that we are contracting out.
Okay, and then also, um, I, as you're aware, I used to be on the Human Relations Community Services Board. And when you guys came up with the matrix, uh, for scoring the applications, uh, the question was brought up, for example, um, it's very administrative, just like, it seems like your quality practices. So for example, if they provide a report, then they're in good standing. Uh, with the grant scoring tool, it seemed if like, uh, every, um, section of the application was filled out, you could score a high score, but it did not necessarily mean that the agency was a good agency. Have you guys, um, added anything to how you determine whether you're gonna continue to support an agency versus just the application? So for example, uh, if they had a project description, I think it was five points. So if they put one on there, they would get the five points, four points, three points. And you guys have done a wonderful job in making sure everybody was calibrated, you know, scoring things the same way. But the concern was brought up that, you know, a majority of the agency scored between, let's say seventy-five and ninety-five percent. So the scoring tool says, yes, they did a good job on the application, filling it out, but there was nothing to determine whether the agency was doing a good job in the field. Is that changed or is it still just the application and everyone gets a ninety and we go from there?
Um, the people who score on the board, uh, we did do some additional questions with the scoring to try to improve it this past year. We also added additional questions into the application, um, to try to get at a little more of the quality pieces that you referenced. We also added additional questions into the application to try to get at a little more of the quality pieces that you're referencing. We also expect when people are scoring that they are looking at qualitative because just putting sentences in a paragraph isn't really going to cut it, you know? It needs to be a good, you know, clear, comprehensive kind of plan. They need to make their case for the needs assessment using data. We point them to some of the data sources that, you know, are useful for some of these programs. So I believe that it also has qualitative aspects to it.
Okay. And Councilman Cost, I think it was, or Garza, I think he asked the outcomes of the department direct services. Several other departments provide an annual report where it says, we did this or we filled in this many potholes. Do you all have exactly what you all have done versus what the agency and referrals have done?
Every year, we too will submit an annual report to the mayor and his administration with regard to the work that's been done in the HRCS.
Does it have the outcomes that Councilman Cost was asking, you know, as far as, because you stated that you guys do a whole lot more than switchboard and I understand. But we still haven't got what we do. We've done, for example, the eviction diversion program was here. They said we helped five hundred and three families avert from eviction, which is about a thousand people. Do you have that information here when we're...
We do have information. In fact, Mr. McDonald's here this evening to help share some information and shed some light on some of those things for you as well. So as soon as we're all done with our budget piece of it, he's going to also share information.
Okay. And how many staff is currently in the department?
Currently, we have ten. Plus contractors, two.
How many contractors?
Two.
What are the contractors for?
We have a contractor, Mr. Willard Walker, who works with us around equity and a number of other things. We have Nicole, which is our office support.
Okay. And lastly, thank you so much, Council President. When we look at the human services funding that has now been increased to one point three-five percent, when it was established, it was established that no less than point tenth of a percent would be for racial equity. But it would be also was established that, you know, where whatever the need was in the community, there should be adjustment in the funding every year because it's based on what the need is in the city. So for example, we have not seen, it seems like it's been limited, that the racial equity point tenth of a percent has been allocated like it's a separate grant when it was initially supposed to be, let's say, for example, if there were three organizations doing services and they requested funds in, let's say, five hundred thousand, you could say, okay, great, we can approve three hundred thousand because out of the one point two-five percent equity was never looked at. And so now it seems like we're limiting equity and racial justice to the point tenth of a percent as a separate grant. And if we look at the ordinance, that's not how it was established.
Yeah, you lost me with your question, sir. I can tell you that the equity portion of the general funds were provided us with the hopes that we would be able to gather some insight from community members about how these funds should be utilized and established priorities to facilitate community engagement. And it was intended to look at root causes of racism in communities. And so that was a separate project that the HRCS was doing on behalf of the city.
That was the... My apologies.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. So if I recall, Peter Spatterford led this initiative. It was in the middle of a budget cycle. So that, for the first time, was added and that was to review. And then through the rest of the budget cycles, it was just supposed to be a part of the one point three-five percent can have mentorship, life skills management, housing, basic needs, racial equity altogether. So if there's more than one agency that is doing that type of work in the community, they're able to receive a grant because we had neglected them in the past. And I know that Councilman Spatterford had led that initiative.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, Councilman Brown, and maybe we can talk a little bit further afterwards. But the funds that were approved us as a part of that one point three-five, it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And it was racial equity funds that will fund local projects to address root causes of racism and promote racial equity. That was the purpose of it.
Right. So now going forward, if there's three agencies to do that service, how are they getting funded?
Three agencies that do that service? We don't have three agencies to do that service. Right now, we have an agency that we are contracting with to gather the information, to do the surveys, to do the focus groups. They're doing a number of things to gather information with regard to root causes in wards one and four. And so upon completion of their project, they will end with recommendations for programs and/or services that can be offered in those wards that would address root causes of racial equity that will be using funds to carry out those programs.
So every year, they're getting a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
No. The work that they're doing right now is to gather information. That's it. They're gathering information. They're going to propose to us programs and services that will address root causes of racism in those two wards.
So in this budget, are we saving this money for later when they come out with programs?
No, sir. We are going to do the other two wards, wards two and wards three. And while we're doing wards two and wards three, we're going to look at the recommendations coming from the other contractor with regard to one and four and posting or putting out an RFP for programs and services to be offered in those communities.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, are you seeking any other grant funds or anything to support the operation that you say that we have greater need than we have capacity?
We have submitted applications to the state and to the feds for funding.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Brown asked my questions. I was curious about the annual report and about the racial equity grants. So you ask, you answer that question.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Emily, at this time, I want to make sure that you get a breakdown on the employees based off of what finance put the numbers together on. I also would like you to check with the city attorney's office on the fact of whether the contracts, once they're initiated, are foible. And then we have the housing ombudsman who has some information to provide for us at this time.
Point of order, Madam President?
Yes.
I guess I'm a little confused. I mean, if we're talking about budget, it seems to me that this, is this about budget? Are we talking budget? Yes? Okay, thank you.
It's my understanding that there has been some issues about whether funding this position or not and so that the department wanted to explain what it is that this role does.
Thank you, Madam President.
Well, thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to be here. I wanted to start out by giving you some brief statistics, some of which you may already be aware of. But I think it illustrates where we stand in the community. So for, as far as housing, so two-bedroom housing, a two-bedroom unit apartment five years ago was seven hundred and twenty dollars. Today, it's nine hundred and ninety-three dollars, almost a thousand dollars. So that's a thirty-eight percent increase, just over five years. Sixty-three percent of our Lansing residents are either poor or in poverty, working poor or in poverty. Fifty-three percent of our residents are rent burdened, meaning they pay more than thirty percent of their income towards their rent. And we are eight thousand affordable housing units short in the community. Eight thousand, eight thousand affordable housing units short, according to HUD. Fifty-four eight filings and evictions have surged to pre-pandemic levels, currently averaging about a hundred and twenty RITs a month. Area homeless shelters are consistently at or near capacity. Street homeless counts are way up. And the city hotel motel program has tried to fill the gap, but the short-term funding won't last. Studies show housing insecurity impacts overall health, mental health, early childhood development, educational attainment, and even employment and credit, among others. The biggest indicator if a person will be homeless is if they were homeless as a child. The number-one referrer of homeless people to the motel program is the Lansing School District. HRCS's objective is to answer every call because people that call our office are in some level of crisis, sometimes more extreme than others, but still in need. Every day, we receive a call from somebody in extreme distress that needs help. Just on Friday alone, I was able to get utilities restored for two families. One woman with five children, including a child that had health issues and needed her medicine refrigerated, and the other had camped in her backyard and built a campfire the night before with her newborn that was afraid the temperatures would go down so much that she wouldn't be able to keep her baby warm. Understandably, our focus has been on the current affordable housing crisis and answering calls to our office has taken on an even bigger priority. HRCS has been averaging over two hundred and fifty calls received a week. These calls range from eviction diversion, where we offer rent assistance to those who have Section Eight or are in subsidized housing, to tenant landlord disputes and neighbor-to-neighbor disputes and resolving Section Eight problems, and of course, people in extreme distress that are homeless. Staff time for each call, at a minimum, can take forty-five minutes to an hour to include assessment and referral to documentation. Some calls can require up to eight hours of follow-up. I've gotten referrals from many city council members, most city departments, the mayor's office, many other social service agencies, and have met with several city employees about their housing needs. I've done my best to treat everyone, to treat everyone that we serve with the utmost respect and care. As a HUD-trained housing counselor, I have been pleased to help thousands of our residents navigate a myriad of difficult life and housing problems, including utility shut-offs, evictions, and neighbor-to-neighbor disputes, among many others. As a certified mediator, I have helped tenants and landlords resolve disputes. I received advanced housing advocates training from the Fair Housing Center of South Central Mid-Michigan and serve as the city's MISHDA-required fair housing officer to identify and report potential fair housing complaints. Together with the chiefs of LPD, LFD, Emergency Operations, and Director Coleman, played an important role as housing ombudsman in the development of departmental and city policies such as our successful Code Blue and Extreme Weather Plans and the city's response to emergency and overnight housing. I was proud to work with the mayor, Director Coleman, Lansing Housing Commission officials, and others to ensure that Lansing Housing Commission continued preference for accepting the chronically homeless for ten percent of their new movements. I established the innovative Renter Education Workshop, RENT SMART, based on the highly successful University of Wisconsin program of the same name to help people overcome barriers to housing such as poor credit, evictions, and criminal records. At the request of Director Coleman, I'm working on an incentive program for landlords to accept Section Eight vouchers to help folks find housing. On my own initiative and with the director's approval, I sought and was appointed as a public representative and one of only two Lansing residents on the Ingham County Housing Trust Fund Committee. Even though it is not part of my official, oh, that was established, I'm sorry. That was established to appropriate nine million dollars in affordable housing projects in Lansing and Ingham County. Even though it is not part of my official job description, I volunteered to serve on this committee to help our city and residents. I've worked every day to try to help Lansing residents improve our city for the past seventeen years and look forward to meeting more challenges in the future. There have been such a wide range of people facing distress and all kinds of circumstances that I've worked on. And these are just recent ones. I was able to help an eighty-one-year-old woman who lived in the same apartment for seventeen years. A new owner took over the building, was going to convert it to market rate rent, and had given her thirty days to move. I negotiated with the management company to give her an extra thirty days, which gave her the time she needed to move. I recently helped a young woman with two infant children who was homeless and living out of her car because of an apartment fire that happened in November. The management company was still charging rent for four months while she had been homeless and had even filed for eviction. I got her into the motel program, found out from code when the apartment had been complied so she could move back in and was able to get her legal counsel through legal services. I just had a woman who was homeless come in the office and she is actually a homeowner, owns the property outright. Her partner, because of a domestic, she is not to be on the premises and she's had to resort to the shelter. I've sent a letter to her partner asking if they are interested in mediation and sort out how they can occupy the property together or figure out how they can sell the house and divide the proceeds. One of the cases involved a man who had gotten a sheriff's writ to vacate the property within forty-eight hours. We were able to keep him and his daughter in his apartment. And when I told him we could help, he had tears running down his cheeks when he hugged me. These are the situations that make the job worth it. Even if I get criticized, these are the things that I've been able to do that make the job worth it. And with that, I would open up to any questions you might have.
Are there questions? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you for being here today. In the beginning of your testimony, you stated there were a high percentage of individuals living in poverty in Lansing. And my question is, first question is, what percentage of those that are living in poverty that need our assistance are in Ingham County?
Those are sixty-three percent of Lansing residents. They're either working poor. That's according to the ALIS study from United Way.
So out of the county, Ingham County, what is the percentage of the residents of the county that are also Lansing residents?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Because it seems, what we were stating earlier is that if we're doing all the service, but we also are serving all of the county residents and we're not getting any support, a federal pass-through is not any support from the county who has their own three-hundred-million-dollar budget. And we're saying we don't have enough resources and support while we're also facing a structural deficit. So it would just seem that we would want to partner with our county partners to try and help meet some of the need because we, we're sharing our residents from the county and the Lansing. And you guys said you have not done that. You also indicated that you have provided rental assistance to constituents. How much rental assistance have you provided?
The, I don't have the exact numbers that we've provided assistance for. We have a maximum of a thousand dollars that we're helping people with. And so I think it's a total of, the number of people is right around sixty-two or sixty-four since January. So, and that includes a number of children, a lot of children that were there.
So when we're talking about budget and we're saying, what is the productivity of your position? Those are the type of things that I'm personally asking for, is saying, well, how much did you provide? So when you're coming and you're saying, well, we help people, we don't know because you're not providing any of the data, you know, precise. How many people have you served?
Right now, I'm averaging about, I'm at a pace right now to have about eleven hundred and seventy contacts for just housing. So where our office is getting about two hundred and fifty calls a week and then just housing is another eighty, eighty-one.
Eighty-one people? So if you're saying eleven hundred, what services were provided to the eleven hundred people?
Oh, that just ranges, it ranges from everything.
That's what we would like, I would like to see is, I, this person and this is what we achieved. It seems like there's no outcomes. In the past, we've also had, and Internal Auditor Linden, I don't know if you can help with this, but we've had a lot of home, human service agencies complaining about late payments and it's caused them challenges. So I don't know if we can look at the last cycle and the payment breakdown to make sure that the agencies that are doing services are getting paid. Some of them have dropped out because it said, we don't get paid, so we're just, we just can't keep doing this. As well as, when you're doing your position as far as the productivity of the housing ombudsman, it's been several complaints that I've received. Do you have, I guess, is there some type of database or something where you're saying, I'm doing this service, following this person, they need A, B, and C, I referred them here, I did this, we paid this much money? And so we know and can see that this is what we're funding as far as a housing ombudsman because myself too, I've helped people get housing myself and I know Councilman Cost and a few others. So it seems like we're doing the job and, you know, we're supposed to be counsel. So that's kind of where we're trying, I'm trying to, I don't want to speak for anyone else, see what exactly, you know, that we can grab a hold of tangibly that's being done. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Did you want to say something, Kim?
Only that it concerns me that I, when I hear you say that folk have chosen not to take a grant because they haven't been paid. We've had two that I know that have chosen not to take a grant, and it wasn't because they weren't paid. and it wasn't because they weren't paid. And so I'm not sure where that's come from. But wherever it is, I, I guess I'd be more than happy to address it after this meeting, or at another time that's most convenient for you. But we're unaware of that, and I just wanted to make sure that that was corrected for the record.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Okay, so I've also heard those comments, and particularly the comments that you've got small organizations that take six to nine to eight months to get paid. I don't care about the smaller, the larger organizations, um, you know, that, that have also come to me and said that it's taken, you know, three to five months to get paid. I don't care about them. I do care about the smaller organizations who operate on a very small margin. And, and when they're not, you know, when they're not getting paid. And maybe they didn't go through with it because it's, a lot of these dollars help them. But I've heard from at least three or four organizations that said they were not going to apply for grants because they're not getting paid, because they turn in their quarterly reports and they don't get, um, paid on a timely manner. And so they, they've got to pay staff, they've got to do their bottom line. And so I, I don't think it's just Councilman, um, I don't think it's just, I'm sorry, Councilman Brown, um, that, that is, that it's happening to. It's, it's, I've heard it also, I've, I've had people in my office who have said the same thing. And so I think that, um, you know, it's, my suggestion is instead of asking for specific entities, I think it requires a, a look inward on why that's happening. If I'm hearing about three, and you're hearing about three, and I know other people are hearing about three, it might be the same three, but that's three too many.
Yeah.
And so if you're, if, if you're hearing that, I think we need to look inward instead of saying, well, give me their names or their numbers, or come back with, um, there's just two, because we've all heard it. The other thing is.
A council, specifically if I can.
Oh, sure.
Speak to that as well. Our contracts are all completed by, as much as we possibly can, if they respond by September thirtieth. Quarterly reports are due, and then everybody's paid in November. Folks are paid again in February. Reports are due in January. So if they're not getting paid, it's because they did not turn in their reports. And so I, I'm more than happy to address it. We've got policies that we're sticking with now. And, uh, so if that's the case, I'm, I'm happy to talk to them and/or to either of you who feel that that's a concern right now. Because we have addressed that, uh, that has not been the case this year. And if you've heard it this year, then we need to talk because the folks that have not been paid were those who had not turned in their information. And as of right now, everybody has turned in everything. And I think there was the last, uh, processing of three more payments that were being done. So I don't know where it is that you're getting that this time, but it's been addressed, and that shouldn't be the case.
Well, just for some clarification, um, both for Councilmember Spitzley and Councilmember Brown, I think you might be referring to the report that the internal auditor, um, Eric Brewer did. And we did have, at that time, um, some agencies that weren't being paid, um, on time. And we asked, um, the, uh, HRCS to take that report and to, um, put policies together. So if you've got some new ones that are in there, but there, there was a period of time, um, that they were late in getting them, and it was only after Mr. Brewer had started asking some questions that the checks went out. So I, I think we've had some of those things resolved.
And I, I appreciate that, President Wood. I think, I think that's great, and I appreciate that. My concern was is that it seemed like, and, and maybe that's just because it's late and I need a hamburger, but it, it just seemed like it was a, just a, um, a summarily discount of concern that we were expressing here. And so I appreciate that. Great, thank you.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, um, we have some different information that, um, the, uh, internal auditor will be sending questions out and for you to answer, so thank you very much.
Madam President, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Um, to our internal auditor, I would like to get a number of the complaints that the police commissioner, that is, that the investigator is, is receiving, the turnaround times, and how they've been adjudicated. Um, we, you know, if that's, I, I forgot to, I didn't ask the, the police chief because the, the position was with you. But since you're saying that they're just housed there, I think I would like to get that information as well.
Councilmember Brown.
And thank you for asking, and I, I did have a question about that, and I forgot, so I appreciate the time. Uh, so to make sure I understand, because I've had several people trying to get, you know, these complaints in. The, the position is housed in HRCS. Are you supervising the individual, um, through the investigations? I, I'm, I'm not understanding, what, what does it mean when this position is housed in HRCS? But you're not, they're not reporting to you?
Okay, yes, the commission investigator reports administratively to me, when it would be difficult for her to do so with volunteers. And so I'm responsible for her time sheet, making sure that whatever's needed is gotten, and yada, yada, yada. She reports directly to the police commissioners, though. So she reports on her investigations, the outcomes of her investigations. She worked with their investigations committee. She works with them on that directly.
Okay, so if she wasn't doing her job, who would, who would be responsible for corrective action?
I imagine it would probably come to me, but also to them, if there's a concern there.
So when you say.
They hire her. The board of police commissioners hire her.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we want to thank you very much. Okay, we just have two more budgets, and it's going to only take a couple of minutes. Both the city council and, um, internal auditor's budget, um, the only increases have to do with salary increases. We hired a, uh, full-time physician, um, Emily, and so, um, that would have shown, um, an empty position for most of the year. So when you look at those numbers, you'll see that. And then both for Renee and, um, for Sherri, those positions had not received, uh, raises in some time, and so those positions, um, have raises in them. One of the things that we will be looking at bringing to you as part of leadership, um, possibly, um, next week, would be, we, um, have listened, um, to a number of you talking about, um, budgets and reductions. And so we're going to be looking at, um, reducing our budget by ten percent from our operating budget. That would take down our, um, operating budget, um, by around twenty-five thousand dollars. But we'll bring you that proposal, um, next week when we have our committee of a whole meeting. Are there any questions on those? Yes, Councilmember, um, Jackson?
Thank you, I appreciate that idea. I also think that it might be appropriate for us to look at how could we provide the two-way access, whether it's Zoom or something else, for our council meetings that we've heard so many people ask about. And, um, I think it might, it could or should, at least for one of the places, could come from city council because we're trying to provide that service for people.
Well, we will have the mayor's office, um, here, and, um, city TV is under the mayor's, um, office, so you can ask some of those questions. Um, Sherri did put together a memo, and we have some additional information on that when we were asked by a reporter on some cost. And she had received, um, information from both Dominic and IT on what those costs are, so we'll have an updated memo, um, to you. She did supply one that, um, didn't have all the information on it. So you will be getting that before our next meeting. Okay, then lastly, and this is for, uh, Finance Department and the mayor's office, I just want to remind everyone that we do have, um, a, uh, committee of a whole meeting on the eleventh, um, at Foster Center at five-thirty. And that is our, um, budgetary meeting where we go out in the public. Finance is, uh, gives us an update, um, on that, um, to the public on the budget, and then a lot, and then the public is able to, um, weigh in with what their issues and concerns are. I see Councilmember Spatterford and Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind the council, um, I won't be in next week for either of the meetings. It's not that these aren't important. I'm getting all four of my wisdom teeth yanked, which I hear gets easier with age, so I'm looking forward to that surgery quite a bit at nearly forty, so thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Spitzley.
All right, um, thank you, Madam President. I will be out of town on business. I will not be on the May, at the May eleventh meeting, apologies.
Okay.
I'll be in New Jersey.